Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the public who are watching on Zoom. My name is Val Gilman. I'm a Ward four city councillor and I'm also the council president. I'd like to welcome you all to our May 24th, 2022 city council meeting. Before we introduce each other to the members of the public and to each other, because we're here in person finally after a long wait, I'd like to ask that we stand and salute to the flag and Councilor Majota will meet the flag salute in a brief moment of silence.
Let's release this to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without any justice for all.
Now a moment of silence for the fourteen students and the one teacher that killed in elementary school in Texas today.
Thank you, councillor. Please be seated. So I'd like to introduce the members of the council that are here tonight. First of all, we have Frank Majota, who is our Ward three city councillor.
Hello.
Councillor Jamie O'Hara, who is an at-large city councillor. Councillor Sean Nolan, who is the vice president of our city council and is also the Ward five city councillor. Tracy O'Neil, who is our Ward two city councillor. Councillor Jeff Worthley, who is at-large. And Scott Memmard, who is our Ward one city councillor. Both councillors Grow and Gross are not here tonight. We also, on city staff, we have Max Shank, who is our Director of Public Health, and Jill Cahill, who is our CAO. And looking up at the attendees, I believe that that is it. Of course, we have Joanne Sinos, who is our city clerk. Grace Correa, who is our Assistant City Clerk, is in the audience here. And Ryan Knowles, who is our IT Director, is here as well.
Also, Pam Toby on behalf of the neighbors.
Thank you, councillor. So Pam Toby is here as Director of Communications and Constituent Services for the city.
And Kenny Coster is on as an attendee.
Kenny Coster is here as well as an attendee. So he is our auditor. So, first order of business is the legal language, so I will begin with that. And then I'll ask Madam Clerk to follow the first order. So in the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. First order of business, Madam Clerk.
First order of business is oral communications.
Oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the city, before the council, excuse me, state their problem without debate and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to disposition of same and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council in oral communications? So we have Rose. And Rose, you have up to three minutes to introduce yourself and your address and speak to us in something that is not on the agenda.
And I have to promote her as a panelist. I don't know. Okay. I just promoted her.
Rosemary, we are going to introduce you and would you state your name and address and you have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Did press it, but it's not coming over.
So, Rosemary, can you accept our taking you in as a panelist right now? Because I believe you have an older version of Zoom. So the hand raising is not working. Is that correct, Ryan?
But the more. Yeah, then I promoted it as a panelist.
Okay, you're here. So we can, can you hear us, Rosemary? Rosemary, can you hear us?
Says that she's connected to her audio.
This says that you are connected to the audio and we're waiting to hear you. This is why we're trying this out for the first time. Are we good?
No, she's still connecting to audio.
Try to call in.
Rosemary, could, if we gave you a phone number, could you try to call in on your phone? If you could write this down, it would be great. One, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And the meeting ID is eight two zero, five four three eight, two one seven five. If you wouldn't mind, you can hear us right now and you're able to do that. I'll repeat the meeting ID, eight two oh, five four three eight, two one seven five. So maybe you try calling in on your cellphone. You can keep trying. And if anyone else would like to speak, would you raise your hand? Okay, Rosemary is on now and can you hear us now, Rosemary? Can you hear us now, Rosemary? Rosemary, this is, you're at the city council meeting and we can see that you are trying to connect to the audio. You had tried to call in and now you are back to being panelists to the audio.
What does she need to punch in on her phone if she's connecting by telephone?
She already tried that. So I'll give it, I'll give you the phone number one more time. To join via phone is one, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And then the meeting ID is eight two zero, five four three eight, two one seven five. Councillor Nolan?
Maybe we should move on to the next order of business.
Okay, I agree. Thank you, councillor. So, Rosemary, we will, when you come back on, we will move to bring you in so you can speak in public comments. So please keep trying if you're hearing us.
You explained about pressing star nine in order to speak. You get that?
Oh, right, that was in the intro, but that's a good point, Councillor Memmard. When you, when you come back on, we'll ask you to hit star nine if you call in on the number that I just gave you.
That will allow her to speak.
Right, thank you. Okay, so next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is a presentation from the Director of Public Health, Max Shank. Presentation on policy changes from the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Max. You're here because of popular demand. At our last meeting, we had this on the consent agenda, just as an information only, and our council unanimously decided that we'd love for you to come back and tell us more about this opt-out program and similar to what you discussed at the Board of Health meeting. So if you could do that, that would be terrific. So you've got the floor and we're all watching you on big screen like we're at a drive-in movie, so.
I appreciate that. I want to thank Zoom for giving me a nice tan, apparently, so. And I appreciate this opportunity. It is rather a complex and confusing situation that we find ourselves in. So let's do a little bit of history. Councilors may remember last year when the state, specifically the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board, as well as the State Department of Public Health and Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, all kind of got together and decided that should there be a declared emergency regarding triple E, and that's Eastern Equine Encephalitis, rather horrible virus that can be incredibly debilitating and deadly. Should, and it's also a mosquito-borne virus, but should that become an issue and in certain areas that they would perform spraying to help prevent any possible contagion. So they did, however, at that time, provide an opportunity for communities to what's been known as opt-out. So what does that mean? It means that each community had the, would present a plan for how they would approach doing mosquito control, education and outreach, should there be a concern. So now I want to emphasize the fact that Gloucester, at least in at least the sixteen years that I've been here, plus, has never had a West Nile virus or Eastern Equine Encephalitis case. So Gloucester was well positioned to put forward an opt-out application as a, as a community. So we did that. The Board of Health and the department did that on behalf of the council. The council voted, reviewed and voted on that. We put it forward to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs and they accepted the application. So therefore, we were officially opted out at that point. Let's fast forward to now. So they've changed the rules and I want to take this opportunity to put a shout out to Patty Page and her compadres who, you know, kind of helped because, you know, as you know, you can't be on top of everything all the time. And they were kind enough to kind of keep an eye on this issue and give us a little bit of a heads up that changes were in the works. And so, and yes, they were. So what we found out on April eighth, and not even from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, it came to us through the Department of Public Health via the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, that they had changed the rules. So where before we were considered a low-risk community, they put us into a high-risk region, changing the rules essentially for how we had to respond. And what does that mean to be a high-risk region? It means that we ourselves didn't have any cases for triple E or West Nile virus, however neighboring communities had. And therefore, we were immediately grabbed to be a part of that region. As a, for instance, because we didn't have any cases and didn't have a history of any cases, Rockport, which also did not have any cases, and because it's bordered by the ocean on the other side, is considered a low-risk community. So Rockport owes us a debt of gratitude for that. But what does it mean for Gloucester in wanting to do an opt-out application this year? What it means is that we would have to be able to provide the same level of response, action capability as the state would in that instance. So if you, so as a, for instance, we would have to be able to provide planes for doing flyover spraying. We'd have to have the trucks available to, you know, provide neighborhood spraying if necessary. We'd have to be able to go out into a field, into the field, into certain areas to be able to do hand spraying if necessary. It was just a capacity that this community could not come forward with. And, you know, let's be frank, they essentially shoehorned us into it. Now, having said all of that, what does that mean in the end? So we opted out last year and no emergencies were declared. So nothing happened. And we expect, you know, hope, or hopeful at least, that the same thing is going to happen this year and that it'll continue to be that way unless there's, you know, declared emergency. But even then, you know, there are opportunities for individual property owners, even though the community itself can't opt out. Individual property owners can opt out. And with, shout out to Councillor Grow, who was nice enough to attend Board of Health meeting, he followed up with some additional questions that he had and he helped us work through and frequently asked question, FAQ, that's now on our website. And it helps people walk people through what's happened, what they can do, how they can apply online to opt out individually, where they can get information, how they can be notified if there is spraying going to take place. There's a link to a map that the state will put up to show areas where there may be spraying. So there's a lot of information there and I encourage councillors to go there. If you go onto the Health Department website, there's a, a link there right on the page that says mosquito opt-out. So it's pretty easy to see. And so, but there is a caveat even to that. So if the state does declare an emergency and that usually takes, according to what I've been hearing, it takes about forty-eight hours for them to be able to respond. And if there is a declared emergency, they could, if it's a high enough emergency, still spray areas regardless of whether or not individual property owners have opted out. So they need to be aware of that and read a little bit more in detail on the information. That's the thirty thousand foot view of this. So in short, whereas before the Health Department and the Board of Health and the council worked together to get the application in on time and get it accepted, there really isn't any point in doing it this time. It's not cost-effective and there's no way we could turn around and, you know, respond the way they need us to. So I think probably the best thing for me to do at this point is respond to any questions the council members may have.
Great, thank you, Max. Councillor, what questions do you have, Max? Councillor Worthley?
Thank you. Thank you, Max, for your presentation. Can you guys hear okay on that end? Okay. So this is alarming and thank you for bringing it to our attention. You said we're combined into a high-risk region. Is that region working collaboratively to opt out or do you have connections with your Health Department colleagues in other communities that have communities that are opting out or providing, sorry, the capacity to opt out by having their own ability to do it?
So for the fact that we're in a high-risk region, there's only one other community I can think of. Let me back it up a little bit. I apologize. So what's being proposed is above and beyond what would be done by, for a community that is partner or part of the mosquito control district. So the mosquito control district is a year-round opportunity provided at cost, obviously, to different communities for doing not only mosquito control, but monitoring and sampling and testing. So it's a, it's a broad menu of items that you can pull from. It's the cost of that and the city did look at it several years ago at this point and wondered whether or not it'd be worth going into it. The board recommendation at that time was to, you know, participate, but just if we could take the testing part of it, so, and sampling parts so that we could focus our attention on certain areas in terms of education and outreach because still the most effective way of protecting yourself against West Nile virus and triple E is personal protection as far as we're concerned and education and just being aware what you can do to help prevent exposure. So, but the cost was, at that time at least, was over eighty thousand dollars a year with a mandated three-year contract. And so that was a pass on that. The only community, to get back to your question, Councillor Worthley, the only other community that I'm aware of and that's part of the high-risk region is Essex. Manchester is part of the mosquito control district and all the other communities that are in this are also part of mosquito control districts. So they have those services anyway and probably would utilize them in a case of emergency.
So you said that, I may, sorry, you had said that the state typically responds in forty-eight hours. Is that the requirement that they're asking communities to be, I think you said we can opt out if we have the capacity to do this. Is it a forty-hour response time that we need to be able to demonstrate?
No, forgive me. So the, in order for the, to opt out as a community, you would have to get that process done by May twenty-seventh. So we would literally tonight have to put forward a plan for the council to vote on, which the recommendation obviously of the board was to not do that because it didn't make any sense. However, individual property owners can opt out anytime during the year, but they do need to take into account the fact that it'll probably take time for them to review and make sure that those addresses are included on their list of opt-out places. So if, when you, so trying to opt out within that forty-eight hours likely wouldn't work.
What I was thinking was if we don't spend the money but encumber the money and pool resources with other communities that are like-minded, could we be in a position to say, okay, we might be ready to respond to, obviously we're not going to do it in the next two days, but for next year, can we say, we don't want to spend the money, but we cumber the money and have someone on, on hold, on call to protect us? I think that might be something to consider. You said that you gave us a thirty thousand foot view. One concern I have is if a plane is flying and I opt out, which I have opted out, how could they possibly be able to project that the spray, their spraying is not going to land on my little poster stamp?
I think the idea is, at least in some of the information that's finally coming forward from the State Reclamation Board, that it's going to be a progressive thing. So much in the way that we planned, I mean, our plan last year was education and outreach and that's their initial thoughts is that notify property owners, people in the community of what's going on and then progress if the situation is getting worse or seen to be getting worse, then possibly truck spraying. Now, truck spraying, obviously would be a lot easier for people to be able to opt out. The maximum distance I think that the spray can go is probably three hundred feet. And, but from what I've read online, people would, are asked that they would put up basically pie tins saying no spray on them at the front of their properties so the trucks would know. When it comes to aerial spraying, I agree. I'm not quite sure how they would manage that especially. But that's something I would have to look into further.
Thank you.
Let's share the floor and then we'll go back to you, Councillor Majota.
Just with the spray, like, ramification for, like, people who garden or, like, children or, like, what, like, what kind of spray is it? Like, is it going to kill my tomato garden or is it going to, you know, harm my kids? Like, what, what is it?
No, you know, obviously they, on, on the state's websites, the information that they provide for the types of sprays used and there's more than one they could potentially use. The one that they're considering, or excuse me, the one they advertise the most is basically derived from geraniums essentially. So technically organic in a certain way, but it's, you know, but they do say that if you have standing water outside, you have, like I have at my house, I have fountains, active fountains. If they spray, they should double them out, refill them, refresh the water. Any vegetables, anything like that, you should wash them before bringing them in like you would anyway. And it should come off pretty easily. But again, I would refer to, because I can't remember everything all the time, I would refer to the FAQ that we put up on our website for questions like that. It's pretty extensive and it guides you towards answers to specific questions about types of spray used, what management you would need to do in your home. But it's not deemed to be harmful at least to humans.
Thank you. And nice tan, by the way.
Thank you. I'm, I'm pretty pleased with that. I hope it'll follow with me as I go home.
Councillor Nolan?
How you doing tonight, Max? Thank you for being here.
Thank you, councillor.
Basically, the guidelines that we're, that we're looking at, the guidelines being set by the state, the Board of Health or the state. Same people looking out for our safety, not concerns with COVID, mask wearing and other issues that can be airborne or, you know, bloodborne. So I don't see this as being an issue of being bad. I think that if they deemed it that we can't opt out without penalty, then we are in a situation where we may need this. And I think that the people that do this for a living are the ones who we really should be talking about and listening to. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, councillor.
Max, I had a couple of questions. One of them is, how severe were the cases of the local folks that contracted triple E?
It's an excellent question. I'm trying to remember back. I think there was one possible case of triple E. Now, that was nearby. I can't remember if it was a Manchester or Essex case, so I apologize for that. Triple E is not a joke. People can die from it. West Nile virus, anybody, myself included, and anybody in the room there and anybody watching may have had West Nile virus and not even known it. It could, you know, you basically develop allergy or flu-like symptoms at its worst. Generally speaking, there aren't too many people that I'm aware of that actually die from West Nile virus.
So over the years, have, has, have the medications for triple E improved? And the reason why I ask is that I have a constituent who I was having dinner with a couple of weeks ago and she worked in a medical facility here on the North Shore. And she recalls, it was, it was a while, it might have been twenty-five, thirty years ago, but she remembers at a horseback riding camp from Essex, the, the riders actually came down with triple E and some of them did die. And so she kind of threw that out at me when I was saying, you know, I was concerned. I didn't know if we needed to do this and she had that other part. So it was just kind of, I didn't remember that ever happening. Do you have any?
No, no, I, I apologize. Um, no, I have no recollection of that. My history and knowledge of it is much more recent than that. I would have to look through old files and see if that was ever actually the case or I can talk to colleagues in Essex because they would be the one who would be notified anyway.
Okay. But you, and I will share the floor with the rest of the council now because I've asked my two questions. Councillor Memmard?
Councillor Grow is not with us this evening, but I know he attended your meeting and as a beekeeper, he raised specific questions. I don't know if you were able to address how this, this spray, if, if in fact it is sprayed, which tentatively it looks like it will not, but how that would affect something like pollinating bees and somebody's private bee collection and honey production?
Supposedly will have no impact, but again, Councillor Memmard, I would have to, and if you're willing to hold on a second, I can take a quick look. I check our website. And let's see. I apologize for the delay. Let's see. There we go. The question is, if I am a beekeeper, should I take special precautions, protect the bees before or after aerial spraying? And pardon my speed reading of this, but aerial spraying takes place at night partly to reduce the chance of negative impacts on honeybee colonies. However, if bees and congregate, bees are congregating outside the hive boxes, consider applying a cover to the hive entrance. Consider applying a cover to the hive entrance or over the end entire hive box. Using a loose wet cloth, burlap cotton, et cetera, to prevent bees from exiting. Thus preventing them from having direct contact with the spray during application. Remove the covers and additional boxes placed on hives as soon as possible in the morning. Um basically, let's see, the product being applied has very short life half life one day and breaks down rapidly. In sunlight. Uh the Department of Agricultural Resources has conducted monitoring of honeybee hives. During past aerial spraying events and has seen no negative effects on honeybees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for members of the public, I just, as Max was going on to his system, I went on to mine. So if you go on the city website, you go onto department and then you go on to health department. And on the left side, there's a scroll down. The first thing says COVID nineteen, the second says mosquito spraying. Opt out and all this information is right there. So it's really simple to get. According to Council Row, who immediately opted out last week, it took him about three minutes to do it. So I think that for those of you who are concerned with this, it's a pretty easy process. And it also leads you to frequently asked questions, which I think is important. And this is all controlled by the state and we're offering this information session so people know. What their options are. So I hope that is helpful. So if there are any further questions, uh Council O'Neill, and then we'll go back to Council Worthley.
Thank you. Um so we went from a low risk community to a high risk region.
That's correct.
We still, as a community, are we still low risk?
No, it's an excellent question. As far as I'm concerned, absolutely, but it's we we because a neighboring community. Had case or cases, we got pulled into it. So yeah, but we have not had, I checked. Uh when Kelly Highland was a public health nurse, I checked with her when we were talking about this last year. And she looked back and she couldn't find any cases uh in Gloucester, you know, looking at our Maven records.
So so can I? So Rockport's a low risk community, so they're not in the same region as us? Is that right? Am I staying in regionalization?
Yeah, exactly. Essentially, because, you know, they lucked out uh by location and by the fact that. We hadn't had any cases, they were considered a low risk community. Uh it's either are, yeah, not part of the high risk region, but part of a low risk uh being remained a low risk community. Because we hadn't had any cases and because they're bordered and they hadn't had any and they're bordered on the ocean on the other side.
Right. It's not because we got put into a different category this year than last year?
Not not for any cases. No, not not for any cases that were uh happened in Gloucester.
Right. And one more question, if um. If the state's going to spray, they'll give us forty eight hours notice and how will we receive that? Will that be one of those automated phone calls from? The mayor or from you?
Well, that's an excellent question. I'm glad you brought that up. Uh it'd probably be worthwhile if we do find out that there is going to be spraying, maybe. Administration wants to, you know, participate, you know, send out a reverse nine one one. To let people know that that's the case, but if they, again, for those that can, if they can go on to the website. Uh there are links there that allow people to uh sign in so that they can get notified automatically.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um Council Worthley.
Yes, thanks again, Max. Appreciate your time. So you said that you have fountains in your yard and someone suggested that you dump the water out. And that's assuming because birds would drink potentially from the fountains. We have a watershed, we have reservoirs. We can't empty them out and and put new water. It just raises a question of. You know, the seriousness of this could be could be pretty serious. And so I want to encourage everyone to consider opting out themselves. I know. Mayor Berger announced at our last meeting or one before that that he opted out right away. Council Grow did, I did. I just. Councilman Hard, Councilor Marjorie Oda. I just think as leaders in our community, if we're deciding to opt out, we should at least announce that. To encourage other people to do the same thing. It wasn't hard. City website, a couple of links, a couple of clicks and opted out. So. Maybe the more people opt out, the less spraying will have.
Risk of.
Forgive me, Counselor Worthley, if I can. I would need to double check to uh see whether or not watershed areas or reservoirs specifically. Are automatically excluded as spray areas. Uh I would imagine that they would, but as you had mentioned before. Or one of the other counselors, um it can't help drift. And so it's going to depend a lot on the wind. Uh as they mentioned in talking about bees, it only lasts in the environment for. Twenty four hours. As soon as the sun hits it, it dissipates enough and outgasses probably uh to make it neutral. But it's an excellent question and we'll look into it.
And it also goes with the food chain, right? Whether it be the shellfish or lobster or if it's birds. That eat mosquitoes um and with constantly grow pollinating. I I think it's something that, you know. I don't always want to be naive to trust government all the time. So I just want to raise the the point and if we can all. Opt out or encourage everyone to do it, I'd appreciate that too. Everyone would. Thank you, Max.
But it.
You're welcome.
But I, my personal feeling is that it's a personal choice and I and I think. I think that we were comfortable, I'm comfortable doing that. I know. That my family is most likely going to opt out, but I don't want to make that choice for someone else. So.
We don't have a choice.
Exactly.
Right, I understand.
Um Max, it would be great if you could find the answers to these few questions that came up and then. Possibly update your website. If you would do that, I know you're trying to make this all state information, but. Somehow you could get back to counselors so we can include this in our knowledge. Um that would be really helpful.
Absolutely, I'd be more than happy to.
Terrific. And um thank you for being here and.
Is 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 our health director going to address the issue of the creek for us this evening?
I I'd love that without objection, counselors. Uh can we allow um through maps for Rachel to update us on the conditions at the creek? It's not on the agenda, but it's part of the Board of Health.
Sure.
Um so if we could bring Rachel in as an attendee, that would be great.
Yeah, I I see that she's in the audience and.
There she is.
Yeah, it would be uh. It would, it would not serve the council well to have me try and uh give you the background on this. Rachel has been the lead. On this initiative from the get go and has done amazing work and I appreciate the. Support of the administration and the council in trying to find the answers in relation to the pollution issues at the creek.
Great. Rachel, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear. So if you could update us, that would be terrific. We appreciate you joining us tonight. So.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to update you. Um it's been a pleasure to work with the council that prioritizes public health and environmental health. Um as I do and as the department does. Um I just want to give a quick overview of what exactly we're looking for. Um uh we investigate the pollution source and some of the results that we've gotten so far. So uh when we're thinking about what the source of pollution could be, there's three major possibilities. Um first is that there was an infrastructural problem that was fixed over regular. Routine repairs throughout the winter um and is no longer affecting the creek. The second would be um animal activity uh responsible for the increased levels of enterococci bacteria in the creek. Uh and then the third would be an infrastructural issue that's ongoing. Um uh for example, a sewer line that has been compromised, um that is continuing to affect things. Um and responsible for increased levels of human waste, which would cause um the elevated levels of enterococci that we've seen. So with Wetterton Curran, our engineering firm, um that we've contracted to nail down. Which of these three, which of these three possibilities um it is likely uh to be? And we've been focusing specifically on uh three different sewer lines. Uh one being the cross country line that goes from Neptune Place to Bass Avenue. Um a portion of Hart Street Sewer Line and then a portion of Sewer Line that is um off of Thatcher Road. And near with them, near the witham end of of Thatcher. Um we've done lots of bacteria sampling so far. We've had to wait for the um. Appropriate weather conditions to perform some of these tests. And we've also done some inspections of the manholes and the drainage systems and pipes so far. Um and what I can tell you is that um the Hart Street Sewer Line looks. Um for the most part to be in good condition, functioning properly. We did find some abnormalities on Thatcher Road and on Neptune Place, Neptune Place especially being the.
Neptune Place off Bass Avenue?
Uh yeah, there is a cross country sewer line there. Um the engineers observed um a. Normal and peculiar amount of flow and discoloration at one end of the pipe. So that is certainly a concern. We're pretty confident that's likely a contributing factor. We won't know for sure until we CCTV that line. That will be happening on Thursday. Um next, we did find some unexplained flow on um a drainage manhole off of Thatcher Road. Um it could be tidal influence, it could um it could indicate uh to compromise sewer line as well. Uh we will not know also until we do CCTV this the based on some of the other factors, especially. How where that line is located in relation to the swimming area, we're more confident that um. The Neptune Place line could be a contributing factor. So again, we will be CCTVing that line on Thursday. We'll know a lot more then. Additionally, we've been um taking lots of bacteria samples. Um I will say that the bacteria samples um in the immediate vicinity of the sewer lines. Um and where they cross the creek directly have been very low. So that either indicates that the problem has already been taken care of. Um over again, like I said, routine infrastructural repairs throughout the winter or that the the. Perforation in in the line potentially is farther down and is traveling through groundwater and meeting the creek at a later point downstream. Now, I did just receive some data from our engineers suggesting that downstream there is higher levels of enterococci. Ranging from three hundred um colony forming units per hundred ml to eight hundred colony forming units. Uh which is quite alarming because the maximum safe limit is one oh four CFU. Um and that is downstream closer to the swimming area. So it does indicate that likely the problem is ongoing. Um and we'll find out more um as time goes on. Um and Thursday specifically will be uh enlightening.
Thank you. I I just wanted to make one comment and we'll open it up for questions, Rachel. So I understand from the mayor and from council members that there were signs that were put up. Was it yesterday? Um around the creek area, no swimming. Okay, so um can you confirm that, Rachel? So we're all, we all feel. Comforted that the signs are up at the creek.
Yes, absolutely. So on Sunday, when I um learned that there were um. A high number of people recreating in the creek, I went to the annex and made some signs and uh went over there and posted them and tried to. Spend a few hours educating folks on the risks of swimming in um in the creek. We have not tested the creek itself. Oh, actually, we have of us today, but we don't have those results. So we are um the status of the actual swimming area is unknown. So I tried to make that clear and explain the risks to um the folks that were were at the beach at the time. When I um arrived at the creek, there was already signs posted. Um and my ability, I can't erect signs, you know, these, you know, large metal signs. That would be within DPW's responsibility, but um we do post laminated posters, which is what I brought with me and which was already there at the time. Unfortunately, because they're small, people don't typically see them um and then get taken down um almost immediately. On busy days. But yes, on Sunday, I did post additional signs.
Great. The lifeguards will be back there this will be there this weekend, which will be helpful too. Make sure that that's enforced.
I will say that.
Okay, right, the results are okay, then um they won't, the sign won't be necessary.
Absolutely. If the if the results indicate that the problem has been resolved, um then we we will reopen the creek, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Uh counselors, let's open up the floor for any questions that we might have. Council Worthley.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel, for your presentation. Thank you for going in the office on a Sunday to notify people. It's very thoughtful of you.
My pleasure.
You said, I heard three hundred to eighteen, I'm sorry, three hundred to eight hundred um parts or units per, I don't know the math of it. But I heard you say one hundred and four was the high safe one. So that also being the dangerous level, like over one oh four is dangerous. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
And so eight hundred would be eight times that number, pretty much?
Exactly.
Um do we know what the consequences would be for someone who. Were as infected or contaminated with eight hundred per unit um contaminant bacteria?
Yes, um if you're exposed to enterococci through ingestion, um the likely. Uh consequences would be that you would maybe suffer a bacterial infection. Um and that. The severity of that depends on um sort of your own immune system. Um we are telling people to monitor their symptoms for uh especially gastrointestinal uh symptoms. And also for um dermatological rashes and to contact their doctor if they experience that after being exposed to enterococci.
Um any other questions and then we'll go back to Council Worthley, Councilor.
Just a simple question. Um can we put a sign right when people enter? I'm not, I haven't been to go to ever beach yet, but could we like? Where they enter, could we just put a sign right there? So everybody that walk drives in or walks in will see no swimming.
There is a sign right at the entrance of the footbridge. But people don't.
Over the driving part where they drive into?
Uh the unfortunately, the signage is out of my.
CBW?
Yeah, that would be, that was out of my authority, basically.
Okay. Okay.
And we're happy that Jill Cahill, our C A O, was on the phone, was on the phone, so she's listening to all of this. So thank you, Jill, for being here. Councilmember, you're the one.
Yes, we get a lot of questions about this issue. People are very concerned, as you well know, Rachel. Uh just to be clear, though, uh at at last time, we had a really serious testing results that were back in. September, October of last fall. And correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't they up around two thousand?
Yes, uh counselor, the most recent testing that we've done at the creek in the swimming area. Um was in November and um I had done. An extension of our regular sampling for about eight weeks after the regular season. And I believe the second to last testing event was in um late October and it was over two thousand CFU, which is by far the. Highest concentration of enterococci in um recorded history at the creek. And I will also bring up that we do have decades of of this data. So um it is showing an unprecedented rise in these levels.
Thank you. And and you should just share with us that by perspective, you you have a background in Flint, Michigan, where they had a. Serious water problem. So you you're and you've you've been personally involved in this water testing at the creek. So you're intimately involved with uh. This monitoring project.
I did and I didn't work specifically um with water quality in Flint, but certainly was an intimate part of my my research there. And I will say my professional background is in um waterborne pathogen outbreaks. So, um yes.
Thank you. Um Council O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. Um you said three hundred to eight hundred colonies? Is that you? I I just want to understand what it is.
But it says colony forming units um per a hundred milliliters of water.
Colony forming units, okay.
In this, and again, the, go ahead.
For a hundred liters of water, is that what you said?
Milliliters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Council Worthley, we'll go back to you.
Thank you. Um Rachel, this morning I had breakfast with someone. Uh we went to Charlie's place, we got to talking about the creek. He says, you don't need to spend money. I've been doing this, I've lived here for all my life and we we all know the creek has been flooded. Look at me, I'm fine. And I got an eighth grade education set. And obviously, you know, there's a question of credibility on what he could present. Um could you share with us um what your bachelor's degree is in? So we have some background on on where you're coming from on this.
Absolutely. Um my bachelor's degree, I have a bachelor's degree in environmental science. Um and I have a bachelor's degree in economics and a master's degree in sustainability.
So I think that I think we can all say with confidence, Rachel's credible. Um I appreciate that. So I have a question that's not for you, um but I have a second question. Who could answer this? We don't have legal representation at the moment, but what is the liability to the city? But what is the liability to the city? I think that's a question maybe to come back to, ask administration to. Ask our legal team what's our liability? In terms of the public being exposed to this.
Welcome to put in a request to the mayor if you'd like to get that question answered.
Um, I don't know where I read this, but and again, I'm not sure if Rachel or Max or Jill could answer this. I heard today that we're not gonna have lifeguards patrolling the creek. Can we, given the situation, have a lifeguard stationed in the bridge to patrol this?
I can answer that.
Go ahead, Jill Cahill.
Hi, sorry. Um. I don't, I I'm I'm not sure where you've heard that and. Um, but the the lifeguards will be on Good Harbor Beach this weekend. They they are, their job is to keep their eyes on the water. So. Their job is if someone's in the water in the creek, that's their job to make sure they're not drowning. So um. We have to be very thoughtful about not making them public uh kind of beach police. Right? Because their job, if they take their, if they're busy kicking people out of the creek, then they're not keeping their eyes on all the people in the water. Um. So obviously, the lifeguards, as far as swimmers in the creek, will keep an eye and as they can, they'll definitely remind people to um get out as as needed. But their number one duty, and Tracy, I remember you saying you were a lifeguard, their number one duty is eyes on the water and swimmers at all times.
So Ms. Cahill, you said you don't know where I heard that. I just heard from you, though, that lifeguards will look at the creek and protect people from drowning. If they're swimming in the creek, and I think you're right to say their job is not to be policing that. I think we need somebody whose job it is is to protect public health. And not let people go into the creek. And I don't care, and I do care. What if it's someone in an authority position like police? Or if we have a parking lot attendant or two that's maybe we don't need as many this year because we're doing online reservations. Someone has to be responsible for making sure the message is clear. Uh, a sign, you know, not every child is reading signs and every child is being watched by an adult. So I think we have a personal and moral obligation to make sure people are informed. If they still swim, that's their priority. But if they don't know, I think that's it's a problem.
Jill, can I ask you, um, can I just ask you a quick question? Is is it possible when when the folks pulling into the parking lot, when they're. Um, driving in with their families, they have to go by someone that has the tablet? Could could they just mention to the folks that the creek is closed for swimming? And just systematically mention that to the folks driving in to the parking lot? Some thought.
Sure, we can give them time. Um, but again, that, you know, that's not their responsibility, informing the public about public health. Um, is very important, as Council Worthley first up uh pointed out. And we will, that's the purpose of public education, that's the purpose of getting information out. Um, but it's not, I don't want to be very cautious about putting additional responsibility for public health on the DPW. And um certainly enforcement. So that's what we have a public education campaign for and that's what Max and Rachel are working really hard to spread the word on. And the more the council can help spread the information, the better. Um, we will all be successful in it.
We're happy to do that, Jill. And when you get the updates of the testing and you let us know, we'll make sure that we share. That information, just like we always help with the snowstorms and what other events that you have. So. Um, and we always appreciate you first updating the city website so we can just use that. Information to share for a consistent message. So appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
And the other further questions, I see um Max has got his hand raised. So you're back on the big screen with us, Max. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you for that. I just want to get back to uh Council Worthley's comments in regards to. His conversation with a constituent who longtime user of the creek. Yeah, we know it's polluted, but I've been there forever and yada yada, and I get that. Uh, you know, again, you, one of the uh benefits of having longevity with the city. Is that I've seen the test results for sixteen plus years. At this point, I've tested the creek. And all the beaches at one point or another during my career. And yes, there are times I, there are times it's it's almost predictable. Uh, we do the preseason testing, everything's fine. Comes the season, then the the rates at the creek start to rise. Uh, and once in a while, once in a blue moon, we did have to close it because it was too high. Usually it was related to. A particular circumstance, maybe at the creek itself, or there was a storm. That churned things up and got bacteria to kind of rise from the surface. This goes above and beyond all of that. This, these are rates, as Rachel had mentioned. That are historic, that have never been seen uh in the time that I've been here. And that's what raised the alarm. Uh, last summer and, you know, prompted the administration of the council to move forward so quickly on trying to find a solution.
And just to add to that, Max, if I may, um, we have publicly available data about the creek. Um, weekly testing from the early two thousands. And previous to last year, we didn't see levels that were higher than, I believe, between four hundred and six hundred CFU on the upper end. Um, after, like you said, um, an isolated event such as a storm or another issue. Um, the levels that we've been seeing in the Good Harbor Creek in the last year have been between twelve hundred um and two thousand CFU. So significantly higher than in recorded history. We do have that data publicly available. Certainly, it's been up and down. There've been days where it's fine. Um, it's a complex ecosystem, but um absolutely the data would suggest that this is unprecedented.
Thank you. So, okay, two more questions. Um, Council Harrah, you have an acid question.
Uh, thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Max, for being here tonight. Um, maybe you could identify where. Or will the city mark where the line of demarcation would be safe? Too unsafe, obviously, if it outflows into the ocean. But someplace along the way, it must get diluted enough where there's a safe zone. And and this might be for uh Joe Cahill would, i- if these numbers are unprecedented. Obviously, the the signage, as I think everyone has mentioned. A majority of the people, I think, and I've seen, are are children. And they will not be reading signs. Should we be erecting barriers such as what we have uh on the dunes? To keep people in the same zone. Thank you.
To speak to your first point, councillor, um, the creek is, as I've said, a very complex ecosystem. And we do see dilution occurring to an acceptable level by the time we reach Good Harbor Beach. So I'm not trying to this is clear, but we do have two sampling points at Good Harbor, one in the beach and one in the creek. Almost always, except for one time, at least in my tenure testing the beach, the beach is fine. The amount of dilution happening with the wave activity and the water temperature are both sufficient in um creating a safe atmosphere for swimming. So it's almost exclusively the creek when there's a problem. Um, as far as Good Harbor goes, and that's because we do have standing water at low tide that uh reaches extremely high temperatures from a marine ecosystem. Um, and not as much dilution because of the wave activity. So if that answers your question, typically, once you um at the mouth of the creek, when you reach the beach portion, uh, that would be safe. Again, the signage um is not, would not be in our uh wheelhouse.
Thank you. Um, Max, go ahead. And then I think Council O'Neill had a second question.
Yeah, and just by way of follow-up, uh, councillor Harrah. That was actually considered last year, and we've even posting signs along the edge uh just to notify people. It was quickly brought to our attention by DPW and nature itself. That for those who know, when you get a storm tide coming through, it's gonna wipe out everything. Along that line. And so now you're dealing with. You know, what was meant to be a good idea is now a hazard to navigation out at sea. So you have to be very careful about the approach you use uh. For barricading, you know, the area. But it's a good idea. We did, we did think of it. Uh, but you know, we had to factor in that other consideration.
Thank you, Max. Council O'Neill, thank you.
Um, Jill, this would be um directed at you, I believe. Um. Just kind of following up with um what Council Worthley, councillor Harrah said about um. Just separating, getting people out of the water at the creek. Um, as a lifeguard, definitely um eyes around the water, you're watching people swim. But if the lifeguard is keeping people out of the water, there's no one to watch swim. So and so but the, as a lifeguard, your first thing is safety, right? Safety at all, above, above all else. And so if it's not safe to swim, and these levels look really unsafe. If it's not safe to swim, then that I would think that that would be the lifeguard's job is to keep the people safe. Because if he has to go in or she has to go in and save someone, then she's gonna be exposed to those levels. And then it goes back to what Council Worthley said about liability. I certainly don't know anything about that, but. Um, I think that the the prudent thing would be. To have someone or do your best to keep people out of the creek if it's if it's unsafe. That's my two cents.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I mean, we will, obviously, the intention is to do the best to keep people safe on the beach. I think you guys have, I hope you've seen that there's a lifeguard shortage throughout the entire Commonwealth. Um, and we will, if the Board of Health rises raises this level of concern to something that says we need all eyes on the creek. Um, we'll consider it. Um, but you know, are the lifeguards first and we we have limited resources, we have limited staff. We're gonna send you guys an update um in the morning about uh all summer operations. We're limited and challenge it in all areas, um lifeguards being one of them. And yeah, we're gonna, we will definitely keep safety as their priority. And as they can, they will keep kids out of the beach. But I really hope that you guys will help us spread. The message of personal responsibility. There should not be kids unattended in the creek. Their parents should be nearby. Um, so there is a level of personal responsibility. We talked about this during COVID um on the beaches. Uh, so this is a, this is a piece that we've gone roundabout on the beaches for years, certainly through COVID. And so there is a level of personal responsibility that needs to be taken here. But to the extent possible. Um, we will inform the lifeguards to keep an eye on it and get people out of out of the creek as well. Um, but again, we also look to the Board of Health for some direction in that. Um, as he said. The barriers and things like that, it becomes litter, they become navigational hazards. Um, and. So, you know, again, if 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 they rise to these levels, we're bored of the board of health, we shut down beaches all the time. We shut down pavilion on a regular basis. If the board of health needs us to shut it down, we'll shut it down.
So um just one more question. Go ahead. Um, I haven't um been to the beach in a while. Do they typically, they used to have one lifeguard posted at the creek. Do they still have that? Or is there no lifeguard at the creek?
I, I don't know what the, I don't know for this season yet because I don't um, I don't know. I know our lifeguard levels are are high enough to staff the two big beaches. Um, but I don't know the exact number of lifeguards, but I can uh follow up on that with you, councillor O'Neill.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And just a couple of comments as we can wrap this issue up is um. As Max commended Patty Page for the work that she's done in the past with mosquito. Control issues, uh, and also like to just shout out to Mary Ann Boucher, who also. Took a leadership role early in the weekend when a large bus from California came. And um she just went very softly mentioned to the. To the folks, the the chaperones, that it might not be a bad thing if they, the kids weren't waiting or swimming in the creek. And the chaperones were very appreciative and she had a nice chat with them, welcomed them to Gloucester, and it was kind of a win-win. So we're all in this together and um I'm grateful that. We've um taken upon ourselves as a city council to support a hundred and twenty thousand dollar survey to kind of assist Rachel. And in the public health department overseeing this because we realize it's important, we want to solve it. Um, so thank you for for stretching your conversation tonight and this conversation was very timely. And we appreciate you being here um to help us through it. So. Good night, Rachel and Max.
And good luck with the testing this week.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor. We appreciate the time.
Thanks a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next order of business, Matt Clark.
We have Rosemary back on.
Oh, great.
The attendee.
Rosemary, we'd love you to come on now. And um if you've called in, if you could hit, see if we can bring you on.
The promoter is a panelist again. I don't know. I see her number, I see her down. Is it, is that her phone number?
Rosemary, is your phone number, does it end with nine, one, one, four? If that's you, can you hit star nine so we can bring you in? On your phone, just hit star nine. That is you. You can, oh, I think we're here.
I don't know if it's for.
If that is you, um, Rosemary, if you could, um.
I just partner in, the person in.
We've brought you in. I don't know if that is you. Um, would you unmute yourself and tell us if you're Rosemary? Okay. I don't think it's gonna work tonight. So um, Rosemary, I understand that you've been in contact with Council Memard. So if you wouldn't mind connecting with him.
Uh, uh, during councillor comment at the end of the evening, I can update the councillor in the mayor's office about her concerns.
Okay, great. So Rosemary, if you, I think you can hear us, Council Memard said he would update us in the um. The latter part of the agenda on um the issues that you brought forward. So they will be addressed and reported to city management. So thank you. Oh, someone has a hand up. So that ends in eight, one, one, four. It's the same, it's the same number.
She muted?
Here we go.
Hello.
We can hear you. Can you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you introduce yourself and your address?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Rosemary Laurenter and I live at seventy-four Thatcher Road in Gloucester. Um, and then basically my concern is that within the past three years, the intersection between Witham and Thatcher. You know, we, there have been three condominiums uh built. And uh as a result of that, we, there's, you know, more traffic in at that location. Um, the currently there is a crosswalk there, but we only can only see a third of it. Um, and we have, uh, you know, there's a lot of traffic that goes by and there's a lot of pedestrians that go by. And um I would like to request that the existing crosswalk be repainted. And also, if it would be possible, to add additional crosswalks because of the seventy-four Thatcher, seventy-eight Thatcher. Um, you know, we need to cross to go to the beach and um the traffic is pretty heavy and they drive pretty fast. Um, and it hasn't been easy crossing of the street with children. Um, and with the summer coming up, it's coming up, um, we just believe that uh for safety reasons, for the all the. Unit owners uh on the those three corners, it would be important for us to have some uh safety measures to cross the street. Uh, just in the past two uh weekends, we have had two accidents right at that intersection. Um, so it is a concern for the residents, uh, but not just for us, but everyone that's visiting because they walk to uh, they they. Come from Long Beach to Good Harbor, so there's a lot of foot traffic there. Uh, there's also a lot of traffic, uh, you know, pedestrians going to for ice cream or even to the surfside restaurant. So it's a busy, busy intersection and we do see a lot of near misses and some of them are not misses. Um, so I just wanted to bring that, you know, to everyone's attention. Um, that, you know, uh, we don't want to see um serious injuries occur during, you know, at that intersection.
Great. Thank you so much for uh sticking with us on this call tonight. And um really appreciate it and um this.
And again, thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, good evening. Thank you. Next order of business, Matt Clark.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
Thank you. Um, councillors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? I would like to pull off um item number two under the mayor's report. Anyone else? Okay, I will tell you what I, why I pulled this off and then we can put it back to the consent agenda as amended and just take. Okay, I will tell you what I, why I pulled this off and then we can put it back to the consent agenda as amended and just take one vote call vote. Um, the number, it is the memorandum, the Veteran Services Director requesting acceptance of donation of the amount of four hundred dollars. And I asked that we amend that to be forty dollars.
Shucks.
So I am, I'm going to make that amendment and we'll put it back on the consent agenda as amended. So, bro, so we have a, so we have a second on the consent agenda as amended. I made the motion, Counselor Nolan seconded it. So we have a vote call vote tonight to um, that is Frank, Counselor Majota, you are first. So um, Counselor Majota.
A yes vote means we amended to forty dollars, correct?
And we, and we're approving the whole consent agenda all in one.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Memard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes, unless Frank said three of us.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman, yes. Yes is seven, seven in favor, zero absent. Um, with Gross and Grow not here. Um, so next order of business, Matt Clark.
Is the new unanimous consent agenda.
Thank you. So tonight we have a unanimous consent agenda that has two items. One is invitation from the Gloucester Fire Department to the Association to the Firefighters Memorial Service on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and that's for info only. And then we have number two, City Council to weigh in on the Massachusetts Municipal Association's recommendations on proposed Senate bills for the fiscal twenty-three state budget. And that is um something that I have added. And I'm, I'm requesting that we have a special meeting on Thursday from three thirty to four thirty, a Zoom meeting with these matters alone on it. And we have included these in the consent agenda packet so you can see what they are and the public can see what they are. And I think that these matters are extraordinarily timely because right now the Senate is negotiating on these matters and I would like us to be able to meet as committee and make recommendation towards our Senate and uh Governor and our House of Reps that these are important to us or not. And we can go through those on Thursday. So if I would like to ask before I put this back in the consent agenda, if there, if we do have a quorum of five that would be able to attend this meeting before the school budget review on Thursday, this would be three thirty to four thirty Zoom meeting.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan, Counselor O'Hara, can you make it?
I will.
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Majota is traveling.
I will not be able to make it.
Okay. Counselor Memard.
Yes.
You okay? Counselor Worthley? Counselor O'Neil? Yes. Counselor Gilman. So we have a quorum. So thank you. So um, so I will then put this back on the um, the consent, the unanimous consent agenda and um vote to approve, move to approve. Counselor Nolan was my second. Thank you. So nice to be back in first, isn't it? Um, Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Gilman, yes. The yes is seven, seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Matt Clark.
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of May nineteenth.
Counselor Memard?
Yes, we have uh two items from Budget and Finance. Uh, Jill, is is Sal here this evening to make a presentation?
No, I I did not ask Sal to come because he was at BNF, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, okay. I'll uh just introduce this and then if there are questions, you can uh step up to them. Uh, the first item uh from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from our Economic Development Director Sal, Sal Di Stefano uh requesting acceptance of a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. The City of Gloucester Retail Commercial Signage District, District Signage Program. City of Gloucester Retail Commercial District Signage Program in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. And uh Sal gave a thorough presentation. We had a number of questions for him, uh Counselor Gross, Counselor Worthley and I. Uh, and we voted unanimously to recommend that the Council uh accept this uh hundred thousand dollar grant for signage.
Great. So would you make the motion?
I certainly would.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah. Budget and Finance recommends that the City Council accept under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a state grant from Massachusetts Office of Business Development, M O B D, and passed through the North Shore Alliance for Economic Development, Inc. A twenty-twenty-two Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of supporting Gloucester's Retail Commercial District's signage program. The grant period is from May second, twenty twenty-two to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And there is no grant or in-kind requirement, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Is there a discussion, Counselors? Counselor Worthley?
I may. Um, the vote out of BNF was two to nothing. I was part of the dialogue. I had to step off the meeting to attend a traffic vision meeting, but I would have voted in favor of it. And I just want you to take a minute to explain the program. Um, first, thank you to Sal Di Stefano for bringing this to us and its advocacy for it. The hundred thousand dollar grant is actually five thousand dollars per, up to four, sorry, up to five thousand dollars per business. And each of the businesses is not just downtown. It's Magnolia, Lexington Ave, it's Rocky Neck. They then can apply for a sign, it could be a sign on their building. It's much like the facade improvement program where people are investing in their property. They may have a more expensive sign. We would cover five thousand dollars of that. And I think it's something, I think the Chamber of Commerce is going to be involved in advocating for it. And I also think the city is going to do a direct mail, a direct contact campaign to get even people who aren't members of the Chamber of Commerce to take advantage of this. And I think it's, and also the building inspector is involved in making sure the signage is uniform. I think it's something we should support. I just want to draw a little more attention to it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The, 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 the grant is designed to help cover all aspects of signage. So it will include design, production, installation, permitting, and hopefully maintenance as well. So it's a well thought through program. According to Sal, there's some good precedent for it in other communities.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor O'Neil?
I just want to make sure that I understood that this for any and all businesses in the city of Gloucester?
Any and all businesses in the retail district, right?
What about the, because it's a commercial. So when I think commercial, I think waterfront fishing industry. Um, is that, would they be? If they applied for one of these grants, would the fishing industry or a processing plant be able to apply for one of those grants and actually get approved for it?
I'd ask Jill perhaps to clarify that. My understanding were the downtown neighborhoods like Magnolia, Lanesville and Main Street Gloucester, but there may be a broader application. It's also, it's a, it's a, you know, competitive process and the applications can be up to five thousand dollars. So smaller businesses can also apply for a less expensive sign.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to answer there. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce is um, is our partner in administering this grant. Uh, we are very conscious and careful, especially having gone through some of the programs we set up during COVID to make sure the people who um, that this, you know, that the city has a partner and and administering some of these. So they're still working out the details and the fine, um, the fine print on what the application process will be, but the intent is to help as many businesses in the um uh, it stems out of our downtown uh local, local rapid recovery plan. So the intent is to help as many kind of front, forward facing businesses as possible, but I will certainly give your in, your input, um, Counselor O'Neil to uh make sure that we consider um all the businesses on the waterfront as well.
Thank you very much. I think they could use all the help they can get.
Absolutely. We agree.
Thank you.
They're an important part of the, of the, you know, we really think of downtown and you're welcome to check out the Rapid Recovery Plan. Um, it's, we, downtown is the, from, from the harbor all the way up to Middle Street. So they're an important part of that.
Thank you for answering that. Go ahead, Counselor O'Neil.
So the harbor, would that include um down the fort where those fishing businesses are?
I mean, that's how, that is definitely, that is the area of the plan for sure, included when all the way down to Commercial Street. But again, the fine print and the details around what a grant application is and how they grade them has not been worked out.
And that would be.
But your input would be important, is important and will include it.
Right. Thanks. And that, I would contact the Kippen Chamber of Commerce or should I just?
No, if you have input, it should come through uh through city staff. Your input should come to me and Sal Di Stefano.
Alright, so thank you so much.
Absolutely. Happy to help.
Thank you, Jill. Counselor Majota.
Um, just so if this gets approved by us tonight, like how, how will businesses be able to find it or like Counselor Worthley said? Well, not we, but some, they'll be contacted?
Yeah, absolutely. So I will, sorry, I'm not turning my camera on because I know I'm on that giant screen and I can't stand it. I was, um, so I am here though in present, um, because I saw what it looked like. Um, yeah, so we are actually, there's going to be a number of ways. We'll do a lot of advertisement. So Innovate Gloucester, if you don't follow it on social media, that is our economic development and community development. Um, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter feed, obviously it'll go all that way, but most importantly, over the next two days, uh Sal and Ken and Peter and a group from the chamber, others from the chamber are going to take a whole walk around downtown. Um, and we'll get them out, we'll definitely get them out to the, to Lexington Ave and Rocky Neck too, but this in particular, this week, they're going to be walking and visiting all the stores because there's a lot of important information to get out, including this program as well as um, as I've updated you guys a couple of weeks ago, on the parking kiosks will be turned on um this week. That's included in the update you guys will receive tomorrow and I included it in the last Mayor's Report. So we're on schedule for Memorial Day. So um, it's really important to me and to the mayor that our Economic Development Director and ourselves are downtown and at the businesses and meeting people face to face. So um, they will be getting lots of visits in the next two days and uh post that because priority right now is getting uh the information also out about the kiosk and um really training them to help us answer questions and where they can find information. And then after that, I will talk to them about getting out to Lexington Ave, Rocky Neck and and any other parts of the parts of the community where they should be spreading the word on the signs.
Thank you.
Jill, would you just mention to uh us in front of the public that will be watching this, when the kiosks are going to be working, the parking kiosks?
Yes, they will be on on Friday. I believe it's eight AM, but Ryan is the person who pushes the button, so he can he could confirm that. Um, the mayor is filming two different instructional videos. Um, I think Wednesday and Thursday, he's going to be on sixteen twenty-three Studios, he's going to be on Good Morning Gloucester. We're working with the Gloucester Daily Times on the information you're guys going to receive tomorrow. I said, as I mentioned, we're going downtown. So uh, the parking kiosks will be up and operational on Friday.
Great. And we'll make sure that we forward all the information that the city posts on the website to help get the word out. And I see Ethan Forman is on our call. So the, our writer for the Gloucester Daily is listening in on this call.
He and Pam have been talking regularly. So and we, I know Pam posted today about the app and the information about the app. Um, and I want to um shout out to our parking enforcement team. They are part of the solution, which is, is important to me and they are also going to be working as ambassadors over the weekend and in the coming weeks to help people understand how to use the kiosk and how to use the app. So we're starting with public education. Um, so that people really feel comfortable and we have a smoother rollout.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Jill, can I go back to um the EDIC and the um Sal and Ken and Peter going down Main Street? Um, Sal Di Stefano, Ken Reel of the Chamber of Commerce and Peter, what's his?
Weber.
Peter Weber, also the, they're all of the Chamber of Commerce, not the EDIC.
Okay, so what's, Sal Di Stefano is not.
No, Sal is our, the city's Economic Development Director.
He's the EDIC, okay.
No, he's not the EDIC. EDIC is as, as an appointed board.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Um, they're going to walk around downtown and what are they going to do? I'm sorry.
They're going to visit all the, they're going to visit all the businesses and talk to them about the sign opportunity, about the parking kiosks. I want to say there was a third thing on Sal's list. I can't remember what it was, but just kind of updates on how things are going, you know, as we gear up for the summer and opportunity, business opportunities to help out the, the businesses.
Okay, can I find out when they're going to do that as the one-two counselor? That might be a good thing for me to participate in if and when.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if they're going like as a group or if they're taking separate times, but I did ask Sal Thursday, I think in particular, he has a time plan because I was trying to coordinate with parking enforcement. So um, yes, I will loop you in when I get like a, a closer exact time. It will be obviously during business hours, so.
Right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, Counselor. Happy to do it.
Thank you. So we have a motion and we have a second, correct? Okay. Um, so we can, um, we ready to vote? Be clear?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Majota?
Absolutely.
Counselor Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Yes is seven, seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Counselor Memard.
The second item from Budget and Finance this evening again is from Sal Di Stefano, uh, a Economic Development uh, Business Development Retail Pop-Up Incubator Program in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And and I'll go ahead and read the motion so people understand what we have before us. But on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one absent, uh, to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a state grant for the Massachusetts Office of Business Development, passed through the North Shore Alliance for Economic Development. A twenty-twenty-two Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And this is for the purpose of supporting pop-up Gloucester Retail Incubator. A pilot pop-up program held in a commercial unit in the building owned by Action, Inc. At two oh six Main Street. The grant period is from May second, twenty twenty-two through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and there is no match or in-kind grant requirements. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Is there a discussion, Counselors?
I'm going to provide a narrative, Jeff.
Okay. Counselor Worthley?
As the last one, I was at the meeting until they voted. I had to step off. I hate being considered absent, but I was very much part of it and appreciative of this. I would have voted in favor. So just so we understand what this is, it's a grant to help businesses get started. That may later on be businesses that are stakeholders and property owners or renters. But the idea is that, you know, when you start a business, everyone here who's in business knows how hard it is. This is to help get started. I think there's a lot of resources that are coming with this in terms of legal and advertising and performers and all those sorts of things. And a lot of people who go into business have an idea and actually have no idea what it takes to run a business. This is a way of helping them. But also in a retail place, I think this is where the Community Impact Unit was, the Brown's Hall? No, I'm sorry.
It's the, the new building.
The Action.
No, the new uh Harborside Village Retail downstairs.
So this will be a way for businesses to have some foot traffic as well as they're getting started. And I don't know that fifty thousand dollars is going to cover every possible need, but it's going to get some people started in business who may later be our downtown retailer. So I absolutely support it. Fantastic idea and glad Sal brought it to us.
And it's an established program. It's going to be administered by Action, who owns the, owns the real estate there. And it comes, as Jeff said, with counseling, a lot of infrastructure. Uh, so that different uh tenants can try their hand at starting a new business. And they have it for a period of time. There is going to be a competitive process again for people applying who want to try out this opportunity. And the hope is that again, that they'll uh get, be successful, a good number of them, and will move out to neighboring businesses on a longer term basis.
Great. Sounds great. Any further discussion, Counselors? Vote call vote. Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Yep. I'm not sure what two oh six Main Street is. I'm sorry. I should know that. Oh, Cameron's. Okay. Thank you.
It's the Harbor Village Building.
Okay, I wasn't um putting it.
They have a retail space um on the, for, on the ground floor.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and and it's a business incubator um concept to begin with, so we partnered with them.
Alright, cool.
We'll all remind each other that we have to stop calling it Cameron's. It's now the Harbor Village.
Yeah, because I had no.
I still call it Friendly's Park and Lot, I'm sorry.
Um, so let's do a vote call vote. Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman? Yes. Yes, seven, zero in favor, seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Matt Clark?
Is the Ordinance Administration Standing Committee Report of May sixteen.
We have no items under this heading.
We have no items under this head.
Thank you, Councilor.
The next is the Plan and Development Standing Committee Report of May eighteen.
So I um we really have no official items except one very important item, which was that we approved the Horribles Parade. For all the street closures. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that one of the items that was on that agenda. Was a preliminary discussion on possible outdoor dining. For Main Street and other establishments for the summer. So I just urged the counselors that weren't there. Uh, Council Worthley was in attendance as well as as um Council Memmar, so for Council Bro and Council O'Neil and I were there. And um so the whole first part of the minutes, you will see um a discussion that we had to kind of introduce. The council order on outdoor dining. So I encouraged you to read it. Um, Joe Cahill was there. As well as Bill Sandhull. And you'll see, it will, it will allow you to understand very quickly. What was discussed and what the next step is, which is on June second, they'll be meeting in front of the planning board. That will be advertised as a public hearing. And then June fourteen, they will be advertised the public hearing in front of us. So, I think that's it, but um on that matter, ahead.
Can I speak about the Horribles Parade for one moment to add to your commentary?
Ahead.
Um, I think a lot of people have a long mistake in that the Horribles Parade is funded by the city. I think the city has been a partner at different times, but is solely by fundraisers. And they want to put on a great show and they're struggling. They will get there eventually. But I think um it'd be helpful for all of us just to know that. I encourage people to donate. I think after coming out of COVID, something like a nice community event like a Horribles Parade. Would send a really positive community message and I just wanna use this platform to advocate. So glad you proved it already, it's nothing the council does, but.
Thank you, Councilor.
Can I ask you a question? Um, how would they donate to the Horribles Parade?
I'm not fair to answer that. I can tell you.
Do they have, they do have a Horribles Parade website?
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy enough. Thank you.
Yeah. Perfect. I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
So, next order of business.
Next order of business is under of the business is Ryan Knowles, IT Director, regarding hybrid city council meeting update. And the inter- introduction of a post-meeting Zoom public feedback survey. As city council begins to transition back into in-person meetings.
Great, thank you. Ryan, would you come join us up here at the table? And I just wanted to take a moment to thank um Ryan publicly in front of us and the general public. For all the support he's given us in the city council. And uh, we've been talking about hybrid meetings. What does it mean? What are our steps? What is it we can do? Tonight was the first opportunity for us to sample what it would be like getting back in person as a council. And then there are other hurdles that we have to go through. Um, and the hurdles are things that Ryan can explain to us, so we understand as a council what our options are. And um where we might need more technical assistance. And how it is we're gonna continue as a council, because this is a decision of all nine of us to make. It's not my decision. It's not the old council who voted to support hybrid meetings with both members of the public and hybrid. It's up to us as a council to determine what it is that we want, and we each have one vote. So Ryan will um will update us on the options, and then he's come up with this very cool. Um, Zoom survey that will ask people that are on the call at the end of the meeting to fill out. So we can get feedback in terms of how um you to view the meeting. And um, do you, do you wanna start by going through that, Ryan? And then we can ask you to describe the different options for our meetings going forward.
Yeah, of course. Thank you also for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. And I appreciate that. I appreciate this is, the meeting has been, I think, relatively free of uh technical difficulty. Um, so for attendees, you should see the option to take a hybrid meeting poll on your screen now. I would encourage you to. Do so. Um, we will just leave it up as um through the end of the meeting. Um, it has, it's very brief, I think it's four questions, three or four questions, and it's really just for us to gauge. It's where using some meeting technology here, which is relatively new. Um, you know, I think just from being here, the, some of the, my end of the table, the angles may be a bit. You know, we're a bit small here at the end of the table, but um, but I think uh, yeah, see, we're getting some results ready.
Great, this is awesome. Would you just read through the questions so we can?
Yeah, so the questions, the first one you should see is, did you have any difficulty hearing any portion of the meeting? Um, number two is, did you have any difficulty seeing any of the panelists? Scroll them. Number three is, did you have any difficulty viewing any of the presentations? We didn't have any presentations tonight, so that obviously is maybe less relevant. And then four, compared to previous public Zoom meetings, would you say that the technical quality of this meeting was about the same or worse? Um, and so, uh, we appreciate, you know, any feedback you have. It's anonymous feedback, so we're not gonna be. Calling you up and saying, what are you talking about? Uh, we're just, we're just interested. I think we're gonna try to have this, you know, on an ongoing basis, and I think this really helps us gauge um what. How, how our technology works, because in some ways it's actually a little tough for us. Sitting here actually to know, is this working? Can you hear us? I think, you know, the the microphone's moving, the, we can see the video, but um. You know, it allows us, I think, to be kind of nimble on our feet. And that's something what we wanna be, is that we want, we want public to have access. We don't want anyone to say, well, you know. Could see you, but I couldn't hear you, or I could hear you all fine, but some of you I could see, which is probably some, I would guess it might be the case, but.
Yeah, that's great. That's really helpful. And just for the members of the public, in fact, we have twelve attendees right now. We've got Denise Paschucci. Foreman Gary T., Jane Johnson, Jess Simar- Semaro, Semar- Semararo. Sorry, Kenny Coster, of course, is our auditor. Karen, Mary Ann Roche, Mary Santo, Pam Toby is our director of constituent services. Communication, Patty Amaro. And I think that's it. So um, so what we have everyone in front of us. Is we're not looking right now at our Zoom screens anymore. We're looking at us here in the meeting. And we're using our iPads only for, to look at our packet, which is like two hundred pages. We have to scroll through our packet. And um, so we're, we're trying this out, and I, I wanted to take a moment before Ryan goes over. The details of what our options are as he sees it right now. Um, just to mention. Uh, that I really, we owe a lot of thanks to the Soyafree Library for allowing us to use this venue. Initially, they were talking about allowing us to use the downstairs friend room, and we felt that the ventilation was better up here. And um, and it was just more conducive to even better technology. The connection here for Wi-Fi is just excellent. And um, they've been so accommodating to us. We had a preliminary meeting. We went through the walkthrough. Last week, Councilmember was there, Brian, Bryce, our Assistant City Clerk, Joan. I'm Joanne, Sinos, our City Clerk, and Jill Cahill, and we kind of hashed it through and sampled how this would all work. So it's part of an ongoing process, but I'm proud that we tried to get out of our, our little cocoon of Zoom, which a lot of people love. And we certainly had really good attendance at a lot of our public hearings. That's awesome. But now we get into a junction, and we eventually are gonna have to start to get back in real person. With people in the rooms with us. But um, so I've done enough of the chatting, so I'd like to ask Ryan to go through. The options that you feel um are in our discussion um for, for future meetings.
Yep, so, so I think as we've had a discussion about the past, the governor's order that allows us to kind of have. Free, not free for all, but to have remote participation in meetings. Namely Zoom meetings, as we've been having them kind of with everybody at, in their own kind of discreet location, that ends on July fifteenth. Uh, you know, we don't have any info right now as to. Will they extend it? They very well may. I don't know, but you know, one of the reasons that I think Val really and uh prudently kind of said. And Jeff and a number of others within the council said, let's start thinking about it now. Let's not wait till July thirteenth. Whatever the next council meeting thereafter is, and said, and then say, no, no, what do we do now? Um, you know. Um, let's start thinking about it now, and that's what I think today is. I think today in some ways is our first step, is our test, dipping our toe into that world to say. What is it like first and foremost, without getting into some of the more complicated scenarios? What is it like for the council to be in person? And us to have something like a, uh, you know, participation with everybody else in constituency, uh, being uh present. You assume, you know, being present via, you know, more or less akin to what they have been. The only exception being we're all the same. So, um, as a segue into what Council Gilman has uh kind of requested of me, um, that, you know, this is optional. You know, we can continue like this, and we can kind of continue like this as long as, I guess, the uh, that remote participation. Kind of uh orders in place. Uh, if that gets extended, we can continue like this, kind of indefinitely and continue doing it like this. Um, you know, with council in person and constituency via, you know, kind of coming in this way. We could also um kind of flip it around and say, what essentially that we do is. We have everybody in person, council and the public coming in person, and we broadcast that. You know, we have it available via something like Zoom or, and and probably even better via sixteen twenty-three via the public access channel. But the one complication with that is that the most complicated portion, which seems like. It which I know seems ridiculous, but I think as we discussed in the meeting, it really is the crux of the difficulty is having people participate remotely. So, um, you know, as uh. Uh, Joe uh mentioned in that meeting, and as she's mentioned in other venues, if you, if you as a council wanna go back and have people come in in person. And you want it to be broadcast so that people can view it, but not participate from home. We could do that next week. It's easy. It's just, it's not that much of a, the real lift comes when we're looking at having people be able to call in. Be able to participate via Zoom meeting, because in that case, we get into a circumstance where we have to, you know, as you can see here, Joanne has kind of a spider web. Of wires connected to her computer up there, and that's what it requires. It, you know, in some ways it, it should be seamless, but in other ways. It's just some of the technology, still the gears are grinding a little bit technically, and so I think that that's one of the pieces that we've identified as being a technical challenge. Is that as much as I would love to spend every Tuesday, I, that will start eating into the rest of my work week.
We did talk, or you talked about the staff requirements to support that kind of, it's really adds a second person or even a third.
Yeah, and so I think that, you know, that's what we discussed in this meeting with Council Gilman, um, and Memmar and um. Um, Jill, uh, Grace and Joanne is that this would in some ways require staffing. Probably a technical person, you know, the library, you know, mentioned, everything worked really pretty seamlessly tonight, but if this, if that just shuts off. You know, and we're all looking around saying, what can we do? Um, you know, if I'm here, I could probably. Get us back in in thirty, forty-five seconds. If I or someone like from my team is not here. Then it's like a call, and probably one of us, you know, I've got someone I call twenty-four seven, because we support the police and fire department, but um, but you know. And they will come here, but it might be ten minutes to them, you know, and so meanwhile, you're twiddling your thumb, saying, what do we do? And so, something technically goes wrong, you know, it's in some ways, especially with this technology, this isn't something that you could say, oh, call me up. Oh, try pressing that button, press that button, you know, you try, but probably it requires someone being here. And then I think we also talked in some ways about on the clerk side, because really, when you're talking about managing people coming in via Zoom. People being present physically, um, you know, you're really managing two meetings at once, you know, you've gotta pay attention, just think we, you know. We wanna have balance that people, people feeling as though they have full access. If we want people who are coming in via Zoom to have the same level of access as people in the room. We don't want it to feel like, oh, if I was in the room, then I would have been called up right away for public comment, and then, but they ignored my hand for ten minutes, because no one saw it. So, in some ways, it really, it's really, again, akin to running and balancing, running of two things. So I think on the clerk's side, there is substantial. Staff, staffing, and I think that that's really what it comes down to. Uh, in some ways, you know, we, we have a really dedicated clerk's office, we're really dedicated ITT, uh, but we also. But that, in some ways, we also are only three people. There's only some people that we've kind of mushroomed into some of these, um, scenarios, so. Glad to, you know, field any further questions, clarifications on that.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add is that my vision has always been. That we invite anyone that could attend here that wants to be here. And by law, we have to be able to have a room size that is large enough to have anyone that wants to be here present here. And so that would, would mean, you know, sixty, seventy chairs. Around the perimeter here, up upstairs watching. It would mean juggling. When people come up to the podium for public comment, it would mean juggling, making sure that they can see the presentations up here. And then also that we can all see it, and at the same time stagger people that are calling in. And try to participate, so we probably have to alternate between people here and then people on there come around. And what the feeling is right now, to really, um, you know, a lot of the folks. That Ryan deals with are from other municipalities that are sampling this. And it's, it's costing hundreds of thousands of dollars just to make a venue equipped to do all this. And we know that this venue is, if things go as planned for the library, this is going to be um under construction in the fall. And then we have to decide where we're gonna go, even if we want to continue like this. Let's make pretend the emergency order continues. And it's one of the bills that is looking at being continued right now that we'll discuss on Thursday. Take a look at the packet. So the Senate is trying to think about, maybe this has to go on longer, because COVID rates are a little bit. People aren't dying, they're not as fossilized as they were, but there is some concern about that. So we just have to be on the leading edge of knowing what it is, our requirements are, but. We just wanted to be honest with you, because this is not my vision of what we want, what I've always wanted to do. This, there are costs, there are um health issues, there are issues of staff. And it's a lot of work, and um, you know, we might find that maybe we could use a, our, our part of funds for this. Because this is something COVID-related, and I might go to one of those individual meetings and say, I'd like to see us. Become really techno- techn- technologically solid to be able to do this without worrying that something's gonna go wrong. You know, and um, that could be an option, but I'm only one of nine voices. And I just wanted to bring this back to all of us here. There's no vote tonight on it, because we're not ready to get to that next step. But I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. We're trying. We've got a, an opportunity here to get feedback from the public. You can watch this meeting and, and say, could you see us? Could you hear us all the time? How does it feel for the people that are, it's not a highly, um. There's only nine people here now, right now, so it's not one of the meetings where we have a hundred people, but. We're, we're figuring it out. We need to do it together. So Ryan, do you have anything to add before we open this up to questions?
Um, so I mean, one, one other note would be, you know, in a scenario where we said. You're, you're there and the public's there, and we're just broadcasting it. I know that there's a lot of interest of being back in Kyros. That could also happen. Because again, the complication of Kyros, Kyros is really bringing people in, and what also accounts, you know, kind of raised was this, you know, kind of shuffle of. Someone's at the podium, can everyone, can they be heard, and can everyone hear them, and can everyone see what they're, you know, everyone in multiple locations see what they're presenting? Pieces like that. Um, so that's one piece. So really, again, the complication of Kyros, really getting people remotely. Brought into Kyros so that we can all see and or hear them.
Right, so, so the option, if we were to do that, we would go back, that's our home. And as city counselors, we would go back there, but we would, we would be limited to the type of Zoom technology we could do there. Because it's just not a good connection at all, and that's a problem.
Yeah.
And we could bring sixteen twenty-three in, and they could do the videotaping like they used to, but it's live, so people could still watch it. But then the issue comes, the people that have loved being able to call in from home are gonna lose that opportunity. And that's, that's the, that's the concern. That's why we have to weigh this all out and get feedback, so.
Was there an option or a scenario that Ryan outlined where that city hall scenario would work, that people would have to make an appointment or. To, to call in to be present, to attend the meeting or to uh ask a question or contribute? I recall we talked a little bit about that.
Well, that would be for the exception person that might really want to participate in a public hearing. And is, is unable to. Well, council always has that option under a law that we enacted about twelve years ago. To do that, just requires you to do a vote call and things like that, but. You know, I mean, that, that's another, that's another option.
I think we, we did discuss that. I mean, in some ways, that's not that different, you know, other than technologically, not that different from Zoom. And that someone still probably from the clerk's office is going to have to monitor, even if people make an appointment, monitor the phone line.
Right. Like one, one of your municipalities does that now, right? People have to sign up. Is it North Andover, Duxell? So North Andover has that. So if you want to sign up to speak at a public hearing, you have to sign up in advance. And you get a panel certification and you're on cue, but you can't do it at the last moment. You have to sign up. And that's kind of the control. Because it's, it, it's, there's a lot of technology that has to go on. So let's open this up for comments right now in terms of, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'll be first. I appreciate the library and this is a wonderful place to be. I just think that we were wrapped in technology, nothing was lying. We're all looking for a way to keep people a part of things and. It almost seems to me, this is just my personal opinion, that we have a lot of staff here tonight. We have a lot of, of. Building being opened and resources being used for something that we could be continuing to do from home. And I think that the bottom line is to have an input for the, the community. On both ends, to be on Zoom and to be in public, we have a technological gap here. But I, I love you all. I do. I love being out in the boat. But again. I think that. We got to keep this building going. We got to pay people. We have the IT staff, we got security, we get cleanup. To me, it just seems that we're, we're better off. Staying home doing what we're doing until we can have an actual solution to what we're trying to achieve. And I know we're not voting on anything tonight and it's actually kind of nice to see everybody face to face, but. I, I, I do think that right now it's kind of a, a waste of resources on something that. Was working before and. I think we're, we're trying it, we're doing it, we're not voting on anything. But I think that the end result is the sooner we can get to a solid situation where we can have Zoom capabilities and in person. That coincide and work together. I think that this is, in my opinion. It's not worth the end result of what it costs for us to be here and to do this, to be sitting in the same room. And nothing personal, nothing personal. It's my own opinion. I think we can achieve more and, and the less cost for the taxpayer to continue what we're doing. And on a platform that we're used to, the technology will work. That's just my opinion.
Okay, let's go to floor. Thank you, Councilor, Councilwoman Berkeley and Councilwoman O'Neil.
So firstly, the only reason why we're here is because we may not have the option legally to have a remote meeting solely. So that kind of forces the issue and I want to give a lot of credit to the city staff, clerk's office, to you, Ryan, for. You know, we, we kind of were a little tough a month ago saying we feel unprepared. I said we felt unprepared. And in a month, you got us here and it's working and I really respect what we've done. And I do know it's a lot to continue. I also want to give you credit, um, Chair. It's hard to look at the screen, be prepared. Call on people in person, call people on a remote meeting and listen and respond and speak. It's a lot to juggle. So I give you all the credit for, for even trying to do it and you've done very well tonight. You know, in a perfect world, we have options and the government maybe continuously emergency order and we can make decisions from there. But I think we're in a good shape. It is nice to see everyone face to face finally. And if we can make it work, ultimately, I think the goal is public participation, right? Safety and public participation.
So as long as this isn't a super spreader event.
Exactly, exactly. So public safety first, right? And public space. I think we rose the challenge today. Thank you.
Yeah, for those of you that can't really, that we're all trying to be at least four feet apart from each other, so. We're, we're, we're working hard to be careful. Thank you, Councilor. Councilwoman O'Neil.
It's, um. Thank you very much, Ryan, for doing all this. Um. So is it that Cairo's Autoturn will never. Be able to have this technology? Or is it because it's going to be remodeled and you can't, you can't?
Yeah, no, I, it's perfectly capable of installing the technology in there, you know, and, and really, and really what I. The vision for the technology in there is that it is plug and play. It's that, it's that it's really easy to use, is that it's not, it doesn't take like, you know. So again, to IT staff to be like, no, click that button. No, not that one. Plug it in there, you know, pull this down. So to have it kind of be that you come in and you set up your laptop, boom, you run it and it works. It's not there. Like, again, even let's say the connectivity was okay in Cairo. It still would take a, a setup in there of, of complexity level that certainly someone from the IT staff would have to be there each time. Just if, if something went wrong, it just would be, I think it would be unrealistic to ask any of you or the clerk's office to troubleshoot that. In a way that would, you know, cause you to have to just stop, you know, so. And, and I think that that's against another concern, even that, you know, I think, uh, Vice Chair, you know, Noel, that kind of brought up too, just the cost of, you know, someone sitting there. Again, I mean, I love being here with you and listening to this, but you know, I just mostly sat here for hours, you know, and it's, and I. Glad to, I was glad to do it just to make sure that this went off well, but that's, you know, there were mo- most of the time, it's probably going to be. His staff, an IT staff person would be sitting there, wanting, waiting for the meeting to start and finish and probably nothing going wrong. Because of course, the day that we said, I don't think we need the IT staff there anymore, why don't you not be there is the day that everything would shut off, you know. Everything would crash and burn and that. But, you know, Murphy's Law and stuff, but yeah, so it's not that it wouldn't, it is never, but I think that also the call, one of those pieces that we identified. The cost, the benefit, you know, given it would require us to kind of pull it all out and put it somewhere or in the middle of to renovate it and. Put all that in at some additional cost.
I have a question that has nothing to do with hybrid or anything, but, um. A couple of people have mentioned to me that they can't see who was on the call. Do we have the ability to let the. The participants or the attendees to see who's on the call with them?
Or no? Oh, to see the other attendees?
Yeah.
Um, so it is a, it is a limitation of the webinar feature we use on Zoom. It has something to do with, because webinars can have up to, you know, like thousands of people on them. Sometimes they're used for things like an actual webinar, you know, so it's getting a big seminar on this or that, they, you know, they have privacy concerns. So it's something that they kind of are trying to hold balance where, you know, whereas maybe, you know, they, they don't want to have everybody's name, everyone would be able to scan through and see who's on. A call. So the only way to allow everybody to see everybody else on a call is to do Zoom meeting, which then. Exposes us and has exposed us to the possibility of Zoom bombing. Which means that everyone who's on has the ability to turn their audio and video on.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I don't, I, i- if you would like me to run through some.
Oh, no, no, no.
Some possibilities of what, what, what could occur.
Okay, because I've been on Zoom meetings where you could see and hear other people, but I didn't realize that I did have people need to speak, so.
Yeah, you can just unmute yourself and call.
Okay, yeah, no, that's not good.
I could turn in, I, I, I believe locally, there was a heavily fortified meeting. Uh, a, you know, the, the subject of which we'll leave, we'll leave unsaid for now, but, uh, yeah, we're basically. They had to move in and the meeting and it kept going on. It was, it was embarrassing. It was a disaster.
Okay, thank you.
We're done.
But I read, I read the people tonight who were here.
Well, that was, we're not violating, we're not violating people's privacy.
If there's a hundred people though, it would take a while, but we could certainly do that.
You've done well.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not the reason I asked. I just, I, people would like to know, you know, if they're the only one who's on or if there's. You know, fifty people behind them, you know, but if they can hide themselves where they want, that's.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's unfortunate. It's a balance that, that I think Zoom as a platform is not something that we turn on or off as a city. Something that the platform itself, the platform, that they're trying to get balance, privacy in some situations and in ours. Yeah, it'd be nice to actually have that capability, but again, it's an international corporation. I could say, could you do that, please? And they'll say, sure, we'll, we'll duly noted, we'll send it to the developer.
Right, thank you.
Well, some questions spoken, yeah. Council.
I, again, obviously, thank you. Obviously, whoever, everyone who's involved in this, this is, um. It's great. It's also fun. I think this is our, my second in-person meeting. I'll generate Tracy too.
Yeah.
But I agree with Councilor Nolan as well to extend of, yes, this is very costly. And, you know, so I sort of like the, you know, until we can figure it out or we see what happens in July, this works. Sweet. This is a way to sort of do it in the future, but it is sort of. You know, I think more cost effective to, you know, have everyone at home until there is, you know, we'll see what happens based on what the Senate does. That's it.
Thank you, Dan. Um, Councilor Harris, have you spoken?
No, I have not. Thank you. Ryan, thank you very much. Your efforts are very much appreciated all the way around today. Everything you do for us, it is, I can, for one, I can tell you, I have all I could do to turn this thing on. So thank you. I have to support a hundred percent of what Councilor Nolan says. You know, we're here to govern the city and we're voices of the people, but we also have to look at the bottom line. And I think that, you know, as everyone said, you know, we all enjoy being here. But it comes with a cost and, you know, safety is very important. You know, protecting all of us. And, you know, full transparency to the public. We, we all, I think, our platforms, we all want to see full transparency. And I think we've seen that in our prior meetings. We've had. Hundreds of people at midnight. I can honestly say I've been a city councillor now, this is the seventh year. I could say a meeting that would start at seven o'clock, if we had a hundred people at seven o'clock by. Probably eight thirty, we'd be looking at twenty five people. So we, we, we have. The public's participation, which as, as I say publicly, if the public was to participate as they have, the city would operate differently. And I think we've proven through technology that, um, things can happen. And, you know, I, I honestly, you know, what we've been doing has worked. I'm very pleased with it. I think our customers, being the taxpayers, are extremely pleased with what has happened. So with that said, I, I am a firm believer that, you know, we should continue in the, in the prior form. Versus what we're doing now because the costs, we, I, I don't think we're gaining anything. But where, you know, this is costing the taxpayers money that. Is, is wasted. So with that said, I'll pass it on to somebody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. I have to ask a little thing.
I think I'm hearing something that's, I had anticipated, which is, do we have a capacity to tell the governor? Not tell, but have a resolution of some, or some sort to advocate that we like the technology that we can continue working well? Do we have, is that something that has any value?
Well, one of the bills that we'll discuss on Thursday, I, I mean, we won't be able to spend too long on it, but I'd ask you to read it closely. Um, that's part of the continuation and I think whenever something is being worked out as a continuation. It means that other people are starting to think there could be a benefit to this. So I think that that's all part of the give and take right now, and I think it would be easy for us to ask Ann Margaret and Bruce to come in, Senator Tarr and Ann Margaret Partier, our rep. To chat a little bit more about how we're feeling and, and get their input in terms of what they're feeling, what they're hearing at state level. Is that, that's all part of our legislative role, right? We, we want, we want to do what's best for the taxpayers of Gloucester to feel included in the process. And, you know, it's kind of a, this, this was a. This was a trial and we're not going to stop it next week. We have to, we have to phase out if we're going to go back to the other thing, right? Um, because we have public hearings that we've noticed and there is just, there's, we've agreed to start at seven, our major meetings now. Because that's the time to meet person. So, um, you know, but we'll do this together and we'll, we'll see what the state comes up with. With this new extension and then we need to keep in mind what's happening with COVID. You know, I mean, we don't want a super spreader if we have sixty people sitting here and we're having a meeting and it's a public hearing and everybody's going up to the microphone and. You know, we have to be very mindful of that too. So, um, so Councilmember.
Just, I, I agree with what we're talking about here. I, I think it's forward of us to be prepared. I think this has been a worthwhile exercise for, for just mentally to put our, our heads around what these options are for us. I think that's very. Wise of us to undertake. The expense of it doesn't justify itself at this time, and if the state. Does, does not extend their emergency order, allowing this type of meeting without further changes in the legislation. Then we're that step closer towards being prepared to make that transition if, if we don't have the, the option of remaining in person, remaining remotely. I would say that during the zoning meetings, there were consistently a number of comments and people who, who felt that our. Our level, you know, I don't believe this, but they said they felt that they didn't have a voice because they were present, not. Face to face, but remotely. There were people that consistently said they didn't feel we were having a real meeting unless they were able to be present. Face to face. I think that's an interesting point of view because I agree, as Jamie stated, that we clearly had infinitely stronger. Uh, participation overall, but some people don't trust that, that, they, they are used to being human beings face to face and. They think that that's part of the public process and that operating remotely on Zoom is somehow denying their participation at some level or another. I'm glad we've taken this step. It's been very informative. It helps. Bring it down to earth and some concrete issues that, that, that Ryan has spelled out for us. So we really, we've learned a lot about what the choices will be going forward.
Anyone else in the house can speak?
I, I just pretty much agree with what everyone said. I think the Zoom meetings are working very well and this is an expense. That's not necessary at this time, but I'm glad that we're prepared based on Ryan and that's about it.
And we'll, we'll plan on the next few meetings through June. Same in person here because we'll be feeling out what's happening at state. And I think that that's helpful. And I just wanted to add one thing that we really haven't talked about, which is really important to me. I love the Zoom recordings. I think the Zoom recordings are a benefit to every taxpayer in this community. And I believe the Zoom recordings make us be better councillors because we can go and listen to what was said. Um, we can do recordings in the minutes of exactly what was said. Without a transcriber, you know, it's, and we get to, we get to watch what other departments are doing that are advisory boards to us. So that's, that's, that's something that I believe that was probably one of the only silver linings about COVID that I've felt. Is that transparency of.
Definitely.
You know, it just, it's one thing to see minutes of a meeting that you've gone to, but it's another thing to go back, see the minutes, but also to watch exactly what was said. And I think that's a benefit. So deep down, I'm hoping that the Zoom technology is something that we can continue. Um, it comes with costs, but.
Yeah.
But it's, it's how we integrate it into the whole thing, right?
It's in my budget for the next year to continue with Zoom the way that we have. We will still have recordings and even if we had to do some circumstance where we just couldn't make it work. We're only, only could do something like, you know, people kind of just viewing it, we could still retain people.
So I think we've exhausted this conversation, but I think it's been very helpful. Ryan, thank you. Jill Cahill, thank you for being on this part of the call too, because I know, um, our. Jill Cahill, thank you for being on this part of the call too, because I know, um, our conversation affects you in many ways. Um, as well as the city with our boards and commissions, um, even though we're a different branch of government. Kind of all of this together, like we're working through it, so, thank you. Ryan, thank you for the good time. So, um, so for those of you that are looking right now at the survey, we'll, uh, we'll make sure that we capture. This data and maybe, uh, could we put this at the end of the agenda, out of the minutes? Summarize that?
We'll have an outfit tomorrow.
Could we throw that as a supplement to the minutes? Because it's not really, we haven't really discussed it. How can we, how can we get the summary of what people said into the content of tonight's meeting?
He would have the survey results.
Yeah, so I'll have the survey and I can send it around to you all tomorrow, like, just so you can see it and then. Um, I could certainly compile them and send them to you to include as part of the minutes. Yeah, you just, you got a view, but you, but if you wanna see.
And then we should, we should continue to do this at the end of our meetings and see and, and test it. Okay. Great, thank you so much, Ryan, I appreciate it. Thank you to Grace also for being here. To, to watch our first in-person meeting. Um, and Joanne, of course, for all your.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out and remember for the next meeting.
Um, next order of business, Madam Clark.
An update on the Council on Aging Board and the Dogtown Preservation Commission by City Council Representative, Councilor Val Gilman.
So I'm gonna be quick. My first, I have two boards that I represent the council on. One's on the Council of Aging, on, on aging. And, um, I would just, I would just like to say that the Council on Aging is, is really vibrant these days. And there's a lot of good staff members and have a lot of energy. We have a new outreach coordinator, we've got, uh, people helping people shine there. Senator Tarn going in for monthly meetings, we have lunches, we've got all types of events. One of the, one of the great things that I've been loving is that. The leadership team at the Council on Aging is, is looking at ways to bring the outline groups of people in the community. Into the mission of the Council on Aging. So, we've invited them, for example, to meet with the folks at Lanesville Community Center. To talk about how they might be able to bring some of their Zoom sessions out to the branches. Like Lanesville Community Center, Magnolia Library, um, getting more people in remote locations. So that's something that we're really looking at expanding, which I think will be wonderful. So it shouldn't just be that center, it's rather, how can we really reach out to all the folks? That are want to age in place and to make them benefit, allow them to benefit from all the great programs that goes with it. So, it's really cool, and I'm proud to represent council as an ex officio, non-goting board member of that group. So, that's number one. The second is, uh, my role in the Dogtown Preservation Commission. And there were just a couple of things that I wanted to remind everybody about. Um, I've actually only attended, uh, two meetings since I, um, was appointed on this. Um, Preservation Commission, and mainly right now, the things that we're working on includes mapping. Of Dogtown, and we're also looking at alternatives for the compost facility. And we realize that that is a long-term process, it's nothing that we can do overnight. Because whatever we do to find alternative places for the compost, regards, it's, is, it's gonna cost money. And that is definitely sensitive, but we're also very mindful that Dogtown, um, in the whole compost area is on conservation land. And, um, it's where the trails start. And that is something that we're trying to think of some remediation of how we can. Start looking at different ways to compost and maybe take some of the yard waste that we have. We have seven such, seven, um, times a, a year. People can put their leaves out in their stables, that gets picked up, right? And it all goes and gets put in the compost area, Dogtown Road. And the piles are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, sometimes some almost as high as the ceiling. And, you know, that the compost isn't always clean compost, there's some bags and debris and salt and whatever. Um, as Noel Man has said, we can't really use that for anything other than rhubarb. If you go and try to use the compost out of a compost center. So, um, the, the Dogtown Preservation Commission, um, made a proposal that. For sixteen thousand dollars a year, the DPW will increase their budget. They could extend the contract that JRM has with tipping fee. Because JRM allows us to use that to find another place for our. Yard stuff several times a year. So that's where that number of sixteen thousand was. It was the amount of seven times the amount that they said they would charge. And, um, administration did not feel that that was a good use of DPW funds and, um, didn't approve it. But it did start a really good conversation about how we might be able to. Do a better job with composting, how we could look for other places in Gloucester. That might be able to house something like this. Nothing has to happen overnight and everything comes with a cost. So, we're working closely with Mike Hale and Adrian Lennon on the front half. It's been our agent, it's been on this, coming to all of the meetings and meeting city administration. So those are the major issues that we're focused on, on the Dogtown Preservation Commission, and it's a, it's a. Group of really good volunteers, so I urge you to, to sit in on the meeting, Cindy Dunn is the chair, she's an attorney, she's a great volunteer. And, um, it's, it's a very vibrant, active group. So right now, we're doing best practices, we're all taking, I, Mike Hale gave us a list of, a, a way we can get all this information. So if we can't use CPC funds to do this survey, we're gonna try to get the information ourselves. So we've identified fifteen municipalities on this website Mike Hale gave us. And we're gonna start going out, visiting all these places and find out, how much does it cost you, how do you do your compost, what can we learn? We'll come back and report it. We're completely advisory, we don't make any decisions for the city, everything ultimately comes through city administration. As that board does, reports in. And, and then any decisions are always combat to, to be part of things that fall under our perduing. So it's, it's a good process. I'm happy Jill Cahill is here, um, sitting in for the end of the call just to hear this. Because she's been actively involved and, um, I think there's good, a good harmony, good excitement here. So that's, that's it for the DPC. Does anybody have any questions?
Actually, one question. If we were to ever contract with someone to take our compost, would that mean that the residents couldn't? Treat, you know, there's a, one part of compost, for instance, people get. Soil out of it too, right?
Right, that, that's, that was Noel, that was Noel's comment. That the compost that we have in Dogtown really is, is not a rich compost. It's, it's, she always said that it would, she would, she would wonder if she could even grow her rhubarb. And she's, she's a naturalist, she knows what, what you can grow, and she's up there a lot, so.
So if JRM were to take it, we're not losing anything because the compost is of high quality, is that what you're saying?
Well, they're just trying to look at a way that gradually we could start getting rid of all the boards of stuff that's stashed there. And doing something other than just stashing it there. It's just, it's a baby step. And, and we didn't, we didn't approve it. The city did not want to put that money in the budget, and I, we, we respect that. But we just want to keep thinking of other avenues to take. So, hopefully that's clear.
I just wonder if you all have discussed or looked into the poss- possibility of partnering with the Black Earth Baller folks that are based in Manchester. And have very successfully expanded their regional scope, their, their main facility, which they put a lot of money into, uh, is, is in Manchester. And I don't know if they would be a part of the solution in terms of receiving Gloucester, uh, yard, yard waste and. Leaves and that sort of thing. That they do have a finished product, they, they review and they chemically analyze it and they balance it appropriately. So in fact, it is better than the free rhubarb.
I think, I think we're open to any ideas, and like I said, we're just an advisory group. And, uh, but, but I, I think we're open to anything, so, thank you.
And I looked into, uh, black earth compost for my own personal use and I found them very expensive.
Well, this first group of best practices we're gonna look at will be interesting. And when we pull that together, I'll make sure that I share it with all the councillors.
I'm appreciative of the seven pickups that JRM and the city has, but the compost facility is used. You go up there on a day, weekend, and it's open, and it's once, once a month. It's open from nine to three, I believe. You'll see non-stop vehicles bringing in their cuttings and flippings and what have you. And so that, that's probably the biggest asset to the taxpayers.
Right, definitely.
Because JRM picks up, you know, one, one bucket or the bag leaves.
Exactly.
So I think we have to look beyond.
Absolutely.
You know, where we, we have limitations, uh, the, uh, recycling or the transfer station. On Funnell and Road has been restricted. We're putting clamps on, on our taxpayers right now that are costing our taxpayers. To dispose of waste right now, it's, I think, where, you know, it's then three hundred dollars a ton.
We understand that.
You know, you, you have the expense of dumpsters and what have you. We have a major problem, we have a major problem not only in the city, the state of Maine just restricted. Uh, waste from being moved from Massachusetts into the state of Maine.
Yep.
Um, we, we have a huge problem that we can't just shut down every, people, it becomes fire hazards. People are, you know, just stacking it on their property, putting it in a corner. And, uh, I, I think we have to look beyond what, you know, we're, we're looking at right now.
And we're lucky that our contract with JRM lasts for, I think it's another four or five years. So, we, we went into a long-term contract, which was very helpful for us to have. Because of what's happening in the industry of recycling. So, anyway. All right, I think I've talked this one through, and, um, those are my things to report. Um, next order of business, Madam Clark.
His councils are close to the mayor.
Okay, so let's go and vote on the order. Counselor Majota, you are first.
I do have a couple, um, items I will be sending out, um, probably tomorrow. I'm just working on the final emails and just have a few more questions on how to word it and get it done. Uh, but I'll be sending those out very shortly.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilmember, I do have.
Uh, I had two items for the mayor's office. Uh, one is to just follow up on the comments by my constituent Rosemary. Lorankin, who is at, in the new condos there, one corner of Thatcher's Road and with them. And, uh, you know, there was a crosswork, crosswalk there that, uh, had been repainted about three or four years ago. Uh, the utility construction in the neighborhood removed a good part of that crosswalk and it has not yet been repainted. Uh, but I, I think what she's really asking for is more than just the repainting of that existing one crosswalk, that. Uh, there's a lot more pedestrian traffic based on all the new homes that have been built there and people. Uh, there's, there's not any safety for people trying to cross Thatcher Road on foot. And so, it needs a pedestrian crossing sign, and it needs more than one crosswalk. Um, I've had this, a similar request, it's a little more complicated because it's on Eastern Avenue, uh, by Barn Lane. There are all those new homes duplexes that are up on the hill, people, residents and their families are crossing the road to try and get to the beach. Uh, the difficulty on that location is that, um, besides Eastern Avenue being partly a state highway, um. The landowner on the far side, the, the Shaw's Plaza there does not have any sidewalks and they own Barn Lane. And the, the city DPW can't put a crosswalk from their sidewalk on the other side to a place that doesn't have any crosswalks. Or is on private property, so there's some issues there and, and I've reviewed them a little bit with Pam and the, the DPW, but those are. Those are challenges. The, the other thing that I'd just like to bring up is, again, for the mayor's office, um. The, uh, the manhole explosion last Thursday morning, um, was a, was a serious wake-up call, I'm afraid. Um, I still don't know what the result of that electrical fire and explosion and fireball were. Um, it wasn't clear when, as Joanne was trying to evacuate her share of city hall, I mean. I, I think people came out and they went toward the manhole fire, uh, because it was a curiosity item. Um, I'm just concerned about our protocols for safety and evacuation. Uh, and notifying within city hall, which is a huge building with offices throughout, on the, there were warrants up and down and up and down. Um, I talked with Maggie Rosa, who's head of the City Hall Preservation Committee. Um, they have funding set aside, as we all know, we, we talked about part of this. Update of, of, uh, our Zoom capabilities in Kyrus, we're waiting for. And attending her meeting by Zoom, by following up on Zoom and watching her and Bill Sanborn and Steve Dexter and others, uh. Talking about the issues, talking about the existing money that's been spent, the plans that have been developed that now need to be updated. For, uh, the infrastructure, the electrical systems, the fire suppression and alarm systems. Um, it's a big project and th- they had hoped at one point that they would use the four-hundredth anniversary as an excuse. They wanted to get going on progress and stir, stir it all up, and so it couldn't be used. So it got a lot of public attention because they, they need additional funding, but they need some real pressure to move ahead. Before they have another serious accident that closes city hall. So, the city hall preservation committee, city council, we all just need to be cognizant of the issues there that are, that are. That some of our volunteer, uh, boards and commissioners are struggling with and the mayor's office is struggling with as well in terms of prioritizing. We need to do all we, we can to support those efforts.
Great, thank you. So next we have Councilor Nolan.
I've got nothing tonight.
You've got a work meeting that you have coming.
Yes, I do, I do all Wednesday, next week, I go to the library. June first, six o'clock.
Open forum?
Open forum.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, first, I, I wanna thank, uh, everyone for being here tonight. It's great, thank you, Joanne, thank you, Grace, Ryan, great job. Yesterday, we had a, a blood drive, um, and I wanna thank my councillor to my left, Frank. Uh, and his wonderful wife, they donated, uh, Consulor O'Neill, Consulor Gilman, thank you very much. Um, it was a, with a joint collection, we had both Dana Faber and Red Cross present. We collected, uh, a total of fifty-six units, um, which is a small fraction, unfortunately, of. Probably what was used in an event such as what happened in Texas. Um, there's a tremendous shortage of blood in, in the New England area. Um, God forbid, things happen and we don't have enough blood to, to keep, keep people going. It's an event, again, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of units are used. Um, we have another collection on next Thursday, June second. Uh, it's a, a joint collection. Uh, and, uh, if people need to be asked to donate, consider yourself asked. And I ask everyone to help me reach out and, uh, find donors. It's painless, I think. Counselor Majota, Consulor O'Neill, Consulor Gilman can say, it's, it's painless, it's fast. And when you leave, you feel awesome. Um, so, uh, next, next Thursday, June second. Uh, it runs from eleven to seven between Dana Faber and the Red Cross. And if that date doesn't work, we have, uh, July, uh, June seventeenth, June twenty-seventh. Uh, July eighth and July twelfth. So there's plenty of collection, uh, that will be happening. Everyone's allowed to donate every fifty-six days or eight weeks, and, uh, again, it's, it's an awesome feeling, so. We also have New England Organ Donor Bank participate in the blood drives. And they, uh, they educate people on the, the, uh, the need to think about donating. And they uh, they educate people on the, the uh, the need to think about donating organs. Uh, the need for organ donation is, is huge. And uh they're typically present at the collection. So uh. Help me, help everybody uh by spreading the word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for all your leadership, Jamie. It's amazing. Next up is Council O'Neill.
Uh, requested mayor, I um don't have them prepared, so I'd rather send out an email tomorrow. That's okay.
Just get them to the park's office and share it and take care of that. Thank you. Council Worthley.
Sure, just a few. Um, I'd like to just add to Council O'Hara's work or just let him know how much this means to everybody. But you were telling me a statistic I'd like to share with us. Little top, with, you have the top three donor locations in the state. Is that right?
That's right.
Can you tell us who's number one or two?
Yeah, July Stadium is number one, Boston Gardens number two, Magnolia Library is number three.
Very good.
Probably not one person with a single hand that we led that in this community better than you have. And so I give a lot of credit. But to be in competition with Bob Kraft and be that close, I mean, that's, that's impressive. Um, couple of requests. The um sign at the Rotary uh needs to be painted. If we can bring that. I know there's a billion priorities. If we can prioritize that, it'd be helpful. Um, I think this, what's that? Council O'Neill and I have put in a request to remove the sidewalk in front of Our Lady's Good Voyage Church. The sidewalk, sorry, not sidewalk, the crosswalk goes across Prospect, Taylor, and it goes to a curb that's not cut. And there's a curb cut thirty feet further down that leads to a ramp in the church. And where it is right now, it takes up the space where Hearst should be. And so now the Hearst is parked in Taylor Street and it just gets a little complicated. Right. So I just want to, I don't know how, what you do to move a crosswalk. I think paint thinner or some sorts, um repaint it. That's not my specialty, but I just want to draw our attention to that again. Um, back in January and in February and in March, maybe April, I requested. Backyard growers is looking for, to expand. I think everyone knows here, what they do to provide food for the most vulnerable of our population. They've been looking to expand and I've been asking for a while to get a list of public property to be helpful to advocate for them. And uh so this will be my fourth request. Just want to draw our attention there again. And that's it. I, it's nice to see you all face to face. Um, and it's just complicated lots of ways. Thank you again for the staff pulling this together. But it is good to communicate together.
Thank you, Councilor. And I'm at the end, so I just have a couple of things. I took a tour of Lanes Cove two weekends ago with a group of about six abutters. And there were a few things that I needed to um, to get action on. Um, one are some potholes on Lanes Cove Road, which is actually a public um road that gets, goes out there and there are huge potholes. And it doesn't have to be anything fancy, um but we just need to get those filled. Um, there are steps at the beach going down from next to the fish shack down to the beach that um are in poor repair and they need to be fixed. And there's also a issue of Plum Cove Beach at the steps going, the one or two steps that you take to get onto the beach from off the road. And I had a call from a constituent whose husband's disabled and he really struggled getting down the um, the steps. And she was hoping that um maybe there would be some weed whacking on one side to mint it, to clear out that handle that you could get down there. Um, or long-term, they do need to be repaired. So those are just a couple of things that are happening in Woodford. And um, and also through the mayor, Jill, it'd be great if I know that our DPW department has a schedule for painting, the painting on the crosswalks in the community. And if, and if they could give us just a schedule, that would be some important information that we could give our constituents when there's, when they start to tell us that these different crosswalks are faded and they need to be repaired. We just knew that. I think it would give them a feeling that it's in the queue and going there. So those are my requests and um I just want to conclude the meeting by, uh, you want to say something else?
I want to add a shout out.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Um, seat click fix works and um I don't know that everyone uses it as, as well or as effectively. I want to give a shout out to Rose La Piccola and, and to my son. Because my son approached me uh after picking up an O'Malley school. He wanted to tell me there's a sign that was ready to fall down, like fire lane, don't park here. And I just decided it's for, we'll forget to a seat click fix. Literally twenty-four hours later, um it's been repaired. My son feels like he's the mayor of O'Malley School recess or something, but um I really give credit to Rose and DPW's staff pulling it together. So it works.
It does work.
Awesome.
I've tried it and I bet it'll take it work. So you can maybe walk me through it shortly. I did it.
Oh, I, I do want to just announce this one thing. So uh three years ago, before COVID, we had our first in many, 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 many years, Student Government Day. And um I led the charge, student government days in our charter. And it's required. We're supposed to be doing it. And uh Council O'Hara gave me a friendly nudge um a couple of weeks ago. And um I'd like to just put that back on the docket. And the first thing that I would need to do is talk to the superintendent, see if there could be a commitment of a day both at the high school and possibly O'Malley as well this year. And um it wouldn't be till next year because it's got to be on the schedule. But what we did the last time around was really cool. And it was the beginning of a really good civ- civic lesson for all the students that lost their hygiene. I remember you, you escorted somebody for the day. And I had the privilege to, and I took them through city hall and, and they all came and spoke in a city council meeting. And it was really a cool day. So I'll pull out my material and start sharing it. But I hope that when we get to doing that, we get great representation from the council. But it does need to start with a commitment from the school. So I will work through the mayor's office and superintendent moments and to make that happen.
It was the first and only day I've ever been mayor of the city as a student. Mayor for a day.
Just to following up on, on Council Worthley's shout out to, to Rose.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we all deserve our gratitude and thanks also to several of our long-term city employees who are going to be retiring, including Adrian Lennon, our conservation agent, and Max Schenk, our director of public health.
Absolutely. They're all staff members. So, thank you, Councilor. Okay, I think we've, we're ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Roll call vote. Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memar.
Thought we were going to party.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Yes, it's happening. Good night, everybody.
Good night.